Good morning and welcome to the April 16, 2019 Calaveras County Board of Supervisors Meeting. If you can, would you please join, stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
... The flag of the United States of America, exclusively revolving for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with announcements, but we'll start with CAO Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before the board begins this morning, I need to inform you that we have received new information after the agenda was posted last Friday, which is urgent for the board to review in closed session prior to making its personnel decision in item number two of today's agenda. Government Code Section 54954.2B allows the board to act immediately on items not included in the agenda if it makes two findings by four-fifth vote. Finding number one is that there is an immediate need to take action, and finding number two is the need arose after the posting of the agenda. This information involves a personnel matter which can only be discussed in closed session, and I can assure the board that the information came to staff's attention after today's agenda was published and posted, and that the timing is such that the discussion cannot be delayed. I am therefore recommending that the board find that, as required by Government Code Section 54954.2B, there is an immediate need to receive new information in closed session, that the information and need for review came to light after the posting of today's agenda, and that the board should therefore immediately go into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Public Employee Appointment, County Administrative Officer.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Chair.
Supervisor Stopp.
I move that the board find that, as required by Government Code 54954.2B, there is an immediate need to receive new information in closed session, that the information and need for review came to light after posting of today's agenda, and that the board should therefore immediately to, immediately to, therefore immediately move to, into closed session pursuant to Government Code 54957B1, Public Employee Appointment, Title, County Administrative Officer.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second or a discussion around this? Second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Callaway. All in favor? Then we'll go. Once opposed, we do public comment. Once we... Public comment?
Sorry. If four-fifths vote is obtained, the item would be added to the agenda, at which point there would be public comment on this item before we receive recess into closed session.
Thank you. We have a, we have a motion and a second. Call of vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. We, I therefore put this item on the agenda for today, and therefore I invite public comment. Is there any public comment at this time before we go into closed session? Seeing none, we stand adjourned to, we stand recessed to closed session. I apologize to everybody. We will return at 10 o'clock.
Don't be haggard.
Welcome back to the Calaveras County, April 16, 2019 Board of Supervisors Meeting. I want to thank the audience for your patience while we took care of some county business before we get on to the main show today. I apologize for the hour and a half delay. We will... Report out.
Report of closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, Public Employee Appointment, Title, County Administrative Officer. The board received the new information and will take final action in item two on the regular agenda.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from board members? Supervisor Mills?
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder, Deputy Sheriff's Association Dinner this Saturday here in San Andreas, if anyone's interested in attending.
Thank you very much. Any announcements from staff?
Yes. I am very happy to announce that the final EIR is now released for public review. We will be scheduling the beginning of the general plan adoption hearings in May. I don't have a date yet. I need to meet with the chair, talk about that. But as the document is posted on our website, we'll be getting printed copies available sometime this week, hopefully today or tomorrow, and they'll be available for public purchase as well as CDs. So I want to make sure that you will all get a copy when, when I get them, so.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that'll rocket to the top of the Calaveras County Best Read List, like the New York Times. Thank you. Is there other staff announcements? Very well, seeing none, we will move on to general public comment, which we will do for 30 minutes. If you want to talk about cannabis, do not do it at this time. I will ask everybody to always remain polite and courteous to one another, and I will have a productive and good day. Madam Clerk?
General Public Comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. I want to let everybody know also that there is overflow seating next door, and it's television piped in there. Again, if you want to talk about, if you want to talk about public works, human resources in the CAO, or cannabis, do not do it at this time. So excluding those subjects. Is there any public comment? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir. I have a quick question. I've been coming here now for the last four to five months. Men's bathroom right over here has one of the urinals that doesn't have any way to flush it. I'm not much of a plumber, but I can do plumbing. If you need a volunteer, I will put something in there because when there are more than two people...
Happy hands.
...that need to use that facility, it means there starts to be a line out here. Now, I'm a person who has a heart problem, okay? I could fall over tomorrow if my pacemaker doesn't, or today, or now. But I'm on a, a drug called Lasik, and I don't know if anybody knows what that is. A lot of us older people do because our doctors are giving it to us. It makes you remove the fluid in your body at any point in time that it decides you need to do that. And having no place to do that means I gotta find a bush or something else. Is there any way to get the urinal fixed in that bathroom in some kind of, I know government moves slowly, and it is excruciatingly moving slowly fixing that urinal. Can we do something about that? Is it possible? I don't know. Thank you.
TMI. Thank you. Next public speaker, seeing, oh, excuse me, Jason. How many other public speakers do we have that don't want to talk about cannabis or other issues on the agenda? Patricia, are you getting up to talk? All right. One, two, and three. Beth, you'll be the last. Jason, please.
Good morning. Jason Campbell, District 5. I'm wondering what's going on in Valley Springs right at the moment. More specifically, I'm wondering why I'm seeing political signs popping up in District 1 concerning what's going on in District 5. I'm wondering why I'm seeing a fresh Clyde Clap for Supervisor District 5 sign posted directly across from Zippy Mart. I'm also wondering why I'm seeing recall stopper signs popping up in District 1. While I respect the opinions and rights to vote any way anyone so chooses, I think that these signs should be posted in District 5. I also would like to formally and on the record wish the proponents and former District 5 Supervisor Clyde Clap good luck on that recall. I'd like to state on the record that it is my personal opinion that the boardroom, District 5, and the county as a whole is better off with Mr. Stopper as our supervisor. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Patricia?
For months, they had recall clap out in front of the government center every time we had a supervisors meeting, and so I personally feel that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Governor Newsom has decided that people shouldn't live out like we do. We should all move and live like rats in a tenement, and I personally take offense to that. I think it's better to have people out in the forest. That's how children learn to love nature and value it by experiencing it, and I think that having people in the forest is important because they can work their own land and try to manage nature, which the government does not do. And you can see the forest, the ponderosa forest, clear across the Sierra Nevada is at least a third dead, which is kindling for the ones that are alive and growing bugs that will kill the rest of them. And so if the government doesn't want people living in the forest, they should do a better job of taking care of the government land, the people's land. And so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. I did not see Beth here, so Phil, you get this spot.
Thank you and good morning. I just want to make a request regarding item two. This is not about the content of item two, but the process of item two. Having been to more than a few of these meetings...
Phil, is this about item two? Even the process related to item two?
It's, it's the process, not anything to do with item two. It's the way it's going to be handled. I have a request to make.
Do you want to do it at item two?
No, no, I want to do it now. It's, I'm just, if, let me go through it, and if it's improper, you stop me, okay?
Fair enough.
Okay. Having been to so many of these, I can see the way this is going to go, where we have all the questions, and then there will be possibly polling among the board. Now, the microphones you have now that you've had for the last year or so are a huge improvement over what used to be here. However, when you're talking to each other and taking polls and asking each other what they're going to do, you don't speak into your microphone, and so we hear all this cross-talk among the supervisors, and we like to record who is doing what on each question. How did you vote on this question? How did you vote on this question? Some of us pay attention, some of us keep score, and all I'm asking is that if you can't use the new microphones that you asked the board clerk, yeah, you just moved it away. There you go. That's exactly what I'm saying. Maybe you could ask the board clerk to report right then, who voted what on each item, if you're taking a poll on each item of the questionnaire today. That's all I'm asking, because we can't hear it otherwise. So, thank you.
Very well.
Excuse me.
Seeing no other public comment, I will close public comment. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for being respectful, to keep it going throughout the day. I'm going to have to be very firm on people sniping from the crowd on any side of the issue, so I won't apologize. I'm just going to, we're going to have to do that because we've all done this dance before, and we know it works better when everybody stays disciplined throughout the process. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda. The consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Are there any board members who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Staff members? Members of the public? Seeing none? Is there a discussion or motion?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Your second? Moved by Supervisor, moved by Supervisor Stopp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Callaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Item two on the agenda is from Human Resources to adopt a resolution appointing the county administrative officer and approve and authorize the board chair to sign the employment agreement.
Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. I am happy to be before you today to bring to you a resolution and employment agreement appointing Dr. Albert Alt to the position of County Administrative Officer. We have, Human Resources, under the direction of the board, did an extensive search for a new CAO, and I think that after doing a strong reference check, which his references gave him very strong accolades for being transparent, a strong financial officer, and a good leader, so I am very happy to have a, a new leader to the county. And so Dr. Alt brings to Calaveras County, of course, besides his strong fiscal responsibilities that he's held, he's also has strong negotiation and human resources experience, which I am very happy to have somebody to help back me up when I'm telling departments that they have to do things that they don't like to do. So I, there is, at this point, no significant changes or any changes to our fiscal budget since the CAO was budgeted, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much. Board discussion on this item. Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Yes, in light of the information that was received on Saturday and the fact that Sunday was Palm Sunday, and all the phone calls, et cetera, that I've received, I would like to have time to put some additional thought and review into this decision before it's made, so I'm not prepared to support today. I would prefer that it be put off to the meeting next week so that I have time to review the information that's been put in front of me, and from that can make a decision.
Thank you. Are there further board comments? Seeing none, I'll open up the public comment. Oh, excuse me.
Just a quick note, just a quick note. There is a, sorry, an error in the, a Scrivener's error in the contract. Section 12 does reference the term starting on April 9. That is supposed to be April 27. There was a conflict between one section and the general provisions, and I just wanted to clarify that that was, the commencement date is April 27.
Should there be a motion? We will include that in the motion. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there further discussion or a motion? And if there's a motion, please include the 4/29 start date.
Okay, before I do...
27.
I, I understand there's been a lot of trauma, drama over the last four or five days regarding this appointment. I can't speak on behalf of my colleagues, but on myself, but on behalf of myself, I feel like due diligence was done on behalf of our CAO interim and our HR manager and probably the rest of us who were Googling, tweeting, texting, emailing, calling, et cetera, and a conversation with Dr. Alt. I will, I am comfortable in this appointment, and I think it will do well for the county of Calaveras, which is my highest priority. So I will move the resolution as amended, appointing and establishing Dr. Alt as our county administrative officer.
Is there a second?
With, I, I agree that our staff has done a good job when it comes to vetting and moving through this process, and with that, I will second Marida's motion.
Motion from Supervisor Callaway, second by Supervisor Stopp. I'll call the vote. We did public comment before. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four, aye, one opposed, Supervisor Mills opposing. It passes four one. Congratulations and welcome aboard, Mr. Alt.
Well, thank you very much for giving me a moment. I know you have a busy schedule today, so I won't take long. I first have to say I'm honored and proud to take this position. I appreciate the effort that's been put into it. I will say that it'll be difficult to leave Modesto Junior College. I have fantastic colleagues there. I have wonderful support, the faculty, classified professionals, and admin there. They really put students first, and they have an amazing institution. I'm lucky, lucky to have been there. That said, I'm a county resident. I've served on several commissions here, and I'm really looking forward to serving the county that my wife and I choose to raise our children in, and this, this work, I know it'll be tough work, but it's important work, and I'm looking forward to getting started, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I don't think anybody will be more grateful than, than Lopez. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's not public comment time, but I certainly welcome Mr. Alt, and I know he'll do a wonderful job for this county, and I look forward to working with you over the next several days to help transition. Thank you.
And I do apologize that I have an actual job to do, so I have to go final step.
You have plenty of time to watch how these things go in the future. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for coming in.
Item three is from the Planning Department to receive a presentation and provide direction to staff regarding the content of a cannabis cultivation regulatory ordinance.
Thank you very much. Mr. Maurer, you want to kick it off?
Certainly. Good morning. I'm Peter Maurer, the planning director. With me is Julie Moss Lewis and Ethan Turner from the County Council's office. To start off, I'd like to say that while my department, I'm taking the lead on this, this has been a team effort from the department heads of almost every department affected by the potential for cannabis regulation in the county, so it includes working with the sheriff, the DA, environmental management, building, public works, and other departments. So these recommendations are not just mine. These are a team effort that have been, you know, put together over, you know, several weeks of, of work. So back in February, we had a study session. At that time, some decisions were made by the board to move forward with a cultivation ordinance. I presented you with what we took down as our understanding of the direction that had been given. There were a number of questions that we did not get to on that day, and so I've tried to reorganize those, and at your direction have provided some options with our recommendation. There are, I'm sure there are other options. You will probably hear from the public on some of these issues as well. What I'd like to do first is just go through the first few points of things that we discussed previously to make sure that we are all on the same page. There were a couple of items that I raised as far as discussion points in my memo to you, and just want to confirm that the direction that we're going, so if you indulge me, if we just sort of quickly go through the first few points.
So as we get to these first points, Mr. Maurer, and we find, you know, they're not exactly the way they thought, would this be the time to, to change them?
Yeah, I think, and what I think what we best would be to get sort of a poll from the, the board of the direction you would like to go. We'll be making notes. I, this is a, you know, we'll be, we'll be writing things down as we, as we go along and to make sure that we capture things accurately. If there are changes that you'd like to see, or, you know, just a confirmation, that would be good. At that, after we've gone through the list of questions that we have, I'm sure there may be other department heads who would like to weigh in, or maybe during some of those questions, other department heads would like to weigh in on some of those issues as you're discussing them. The public will then have an opportunity to bring up issues that maybe weren't addressed or certainly concerns over the direction that we recommended or that you might have indicated you would be taking. When the public comment period is over, if there are any changes or any further discussion you would like to have on any of these, these issues, or any other issues that we didn't raise in, in my memo to you, that would be the time to sort of finalize the direction that you're giving to us to prepare the ordinance. So with that, I think the, I don't know if you want me to go through each one of these or if there's any of those first, you know, 13 points that you don't think we captured properly or you'd like to revisit. I did raise some issues in my memo on the zoning and partial size limitations, as well as the setback issue that was sort of left unanswered on personal cultivation. So unless there's, you know, anything dealing with...
I think we ought to go through each one.
That's probably cleaner way to do it, just to...
Otherwise, we're going to be jumping all over the place.
Yeah, yeah. So the first one is, yes, we're going to move forward with regulatory ordinance. Last time, there was a three to one vote. I recall to, to move forward with that. Are there any changes and thoughts on that?
Let's do this. If somebody has a change in thoughts or they're not agreeing, then we'll, we won't poll again unless we have something to come up with. Everybody still at the same place?
We, we have one more. We do have one more vote here now, and as we move forward, I would definitely like to take into consideration his position as we move forward. So that said, either he will or he won't.
Who, what do you have to say?
Carrie had stepped out early last night.
He wants, he wants my opinion on going forward, and my opinion is you have three votes, so it's, we're going to move forward on it either way, so. But I do have comments on as we go forward, especially when you get to 2B or 2C, 2B and 2C. Some major changes that I would like to see on that, so. And I think staff's in line with some of those changes.
Okay. So clearly, we're then moving forward. So under two, I sort of broke that down into different manageable parts. The consensus was that we were going to allow those who had previously registered and were in good standing and had a temporary state license. Those would be the cultivators that would be able to participate in a new program under a regulation in the county. The decision was that parcels of 10 acres or more that are zoned A1, AP, or GF...
Hang on a second, Peter. I think we got issues on 2B or 2A.
2A. So is there, if we segment this out and proceed as we...
Sure, sure. So that was the, you know, the limitation with those who were in good standing and had temporary state licenses.
What's your question?
A majority of the people on our list didn't necessarily have temp licenses in their possession. Some had applied but weren't necessarily presented, but were in good standing. Others were in good standing but at that time had not, not submitted, so I think this direct, the way it's written is not necessarily true to the people that were in good standing at the end of the urgency ordinance.
Hey, do not start clapping today.
Please.
Happy hands. President? Supervisor Mills?
And additionally to that point, as Mr. Maurer could tell you, there was a lot of verified and validated, and there were other pieces to the puzzle, and Sabrina Cable was very clear in that some of them were dragging it out as long as they possibly could with minor technical needs to get addressed. How do we fit those pieces into this puzzle, so to speak, or are they automatically discounted because they never came into full compliance?
The, the understanding that I had and what we would recommend, because the... The, the understanding that I had and, and what we would recommend because the, in some cases, we were, we were able to process some cultivation applications more rapidly than others. And in some cases, it was simply, these were the ones that we got to first, others who weren't able to get to. There were 190 state licenses issued in the county. And everyone that was growing under the rules and regulations of the county at that time, and that included those that were, hadn't finally been, hadn't, hadn't issued registration, but they were still in the process. They hadn't been denied yet was essentially where we're at. So those who were still in process and because the ordinance allowed people to cultivate while we were processing their application, they would be considered in good standing. It wasn't, it was only if they had been denied or had withdrawn their application, they were not in good standing with the county. So in some regards, it would be unfair to say only those who were issued because in some cases it was our fault that we didn't get to them. I don't want to use the word fault, but I couldn't think of another word. So it was the county's responsibility to process those applications. For a variety of reasons, we did not get to them all. There may be a handful that we would have ended up denying had we finished our process, but we don't know that. And so they were cultivating legally under the rules of the county at the time. Until such time as we actually denied them and in the cases they went through the appeal process, the final appeal was denied. And they had applied for a state license. Now, all the state licenses were issued to those who were growing legally in, in, in the county until such time as the ban went into effect and then they were all rescinded. I think with the exception of one that was indoor cultivator associated with a.
Dispenser.
Dispensary, yes. So those would be the ones that would be eligible under a new program unless you choose to, to change those, those requirements.
So you're saying that they've got to have both?
Yes.
The good standing is really then our definition of what good standing would have been?
Right.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenow?
Well, for the purpose, for a purpose of an ordinance, we're going to have to define what good standing is in, in, in that ordinance. And within that, that good standing, I'm assuming that the 190 that you mentioned all paid their taxes as part of good standing, they would have all had to pay the taxes that they owed at the time they were due.
Yes, that's correct.
So that all has to be part of the ordinance as we go forward, not just good standing because you need a definition for good standing.
Well, at the time that the, the taxes were due and they didn't pay, we began to deny those for non-payment of taxes.
Yeah, but we ended the program, so I, I just want to make sure that we have all of that verbiage in there in any form in the ordinance defining what good standing is. So there's no question, we can't just use the term good standing.
So I, I guess at that, that's the point that we would need to be very clear what the board's definition of good standing is.
Correct.
And, and then that might be, this would be the opportunity to do that, I guess.
Just one moment, Mr. Maurer. Sheriff?
Yeah, good morning, board chair. I just wanted to state that the sheriff's office has been keeping track of properties that were doing things illegally. So those properties, we have a list of those and we'll get them to Mr. Maurer if they haven't already been, that basically will be exempt from being able to receive any type of registration or permit because they were illegal during the process, during the UO. In other words, if they were a, a registered grower and were, they were found to be out of compliance or they were, end up denied their application, that piece of property and that name that goes along with that piece of property or any other piece of property will also be denied. So there's some vetting processes already in place that we will pass over to Mr. Maurer.
So for example, if you were a grower and you were in good standing and you grew after the ban, you know about it?
Correct. Well, the ones that we caught.
This goes in line with the state, state regulations also that if anytime you're found to be out of compliance or you grow, have been found to be in a illegal process to do with this type of use, you are not allowed to re-get state licensure also. So I think it precludes and, so I think it goes hand in hand with the state regulations.
It does.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Maurer, you were going to, how do you want to handle this? We're figuring out what the term for a person of good standing. And just before you get to that, I have a quick question. So to apply for a temporary license, that was in January 18?
Yes, that's correct.
And we banned on what date?
The ban went into effect in June of 18.
And were people, but we passed the ordinance in January of 18?
Right.
Were people, and people were unable to apply for that temporary license before January 18?
That's correct.
And my, my question is the and part of temporary license because it does not take a rocket science or a magic eight ball to figure out that we were going to ban in the month of December. And so it would, you know, who would apply for a temporary state license when you knew you were going down anyway would be a question I would have because, so the and part, I'm not so sure that would be a fair good standing.
Well, that is a policy call of the board. I think that my recollection was that we required state licensure and if they didn't get one, that we would then process their, their application for denial for not complying with state law. That was one of the requirements of the urgency ordinance was they were in compliance with all applicable state laws. And so, but if, if you feel that that's sort of immaterial because of the fact that there were cultivators that chose not to renew their application or not to file for the state because they knew the ban was going into effect, you know, that's a policy call that the board would need to make.
Okay. Supervisor Stopper?
I, I think that should be something discussed, but when it comes to the definition, after we do, do the policy call, we should leave that to you and the planning commission to move forward.
We will have to craft that language very carefully so that it's clear and succinct so people know exactly what it is. I don't propose that we do a hearing, but we just want to make sure what the parameters are.
Right.
You want us to.
You know, I, I concur with Jack to the point is the ban went through in January. A majority of these people were not currently in the process of cultivating because of the, the season it was. So many were hesitant to move forward on state temporary licenses and, and for good reason because they either knew under one type of regulation that was proposed that they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to move on or through a ban, they wouldn't be able to move on. And some of those people were in compliance with the UO to that point. And they weren't technically functioning when January 1st came around, when the state temporary licenses started to be required.
Supervisor Mills? Yes, Peter, this in-process for denials got me bugged a little bit because we stopped the entire process when the ban occurred. So those that were in that process towards denial, we just put a timeout right there.
Right.
Where would they fit into this good standing definition? Or is this something we need to have a little bit more broader conversation on?
Well, you may want to have a broader conversation on it. Those were, we would consider those in good standing because at the time they were cultivating legally in the county. We had not denied them. We had not found that they were not in compliance with the urgency ordinance, which would have resulted in a denial. So they had the legal right to cultivate under the terms of the urgency ordinance until we completed the processing of their, their application. And for one reason or another, in some cases, it may have been stalling on their part and in other cases, just, you know, we just didn't get to theirs. They did not get a, a finished review of their application.
The vote on the ban happened in January.
Yes.
The ban, the ban was on the books in June, correct?
It became effective in June because of the, well, a variety of factors.
Right, yeah, no, we're, we're all very well aware of all the factors that came into play, posting and so on. You were processing till June, weren't you?
Yes.
So it didn't end in January?
That's correct. We continue to process up until the date of the ban.
Thank you.
Supervisor Toffenow?
And the reason for that was to allow them, if they were going to move on, to get a state license. So we were processing whether they were in good standing and, or we would have rejected them. Is that correct?
Yes.
They had an opportunity to get a state license.
Right.
Supervisor Callaway, you want to weigh in? No? Okay, so Peter, what, how do we answer the questions you have?
So right now, it was, what we were recommending, what we thought the board had, had directed before was that it be in good standing with the county and a state license at that time. And I've heard that at least one board member, maybe two, are suggesting that it be one or the other, either a state license or in good standing with the county at that time. I, I do want to address the, what the sheriff raised. I'm concerned that unless there is something that documents they went through some kind of due process as far as being found to be cultivating illegally, I would be somewhat reluctant, somewhat concerned about denying someone an application because of, of an allegation or identification. I understand the concern and, and I, I don't want to necessarily reward those who circumvented the lawful ban in the county. At the same time, I, I want to make sure that we're on firm legal ground to deny someone because of an identification of potential violation of the, of the code.
Sheriff, what do you have in mind?
Well, the violation in codes are the fact that we ended up getting a search warrant to eradicate these sites. If we had to get a search warrant to eradicate the site, that means that they were out of compliance. State law, as Mr. Stopper just pointed out, is that if you're out of compliance, you don't get a state license.
And that, therefore, that's verification and with, with eradication.
Absolutely.
But if you just had pictures on another site, that wouldn't be one of the ones you presented. So I, I think you've defined it well right there.
Yeah, what we sent to the planning department, I just talked to my lieutenant over there, what we sent to the planning department was sites that have been eradicated through a search warrant. And I'm not sure what co-compliance has done prior to that, but those are what we have done.
Yeah, I, I think that if, if you had a, if the sheriff had to do an eradication or code had to go in, I think that would be.
As long as we could document and have a clear standard and we would have to work with county council to make sure that language is, you know, absolutely clear.
So we need, we need to answer the question about temporary licenses, correct? You need a poll from the board whether that's in or out. Supervisor Callaway?
It came about that when we first brought this up a couple of months ago, was because to have a control number because if we went based on just good standing, there would be a larger number than could be managed by county staff. So we said the extra caveat would be a temporary state license.
Right. Yes.
So I agree with Ben that there were people in good standing who did not apply for their state license because there's going to be a ban. Why should they continue to do that and spend money? So why not have a tier system? We want, if we're going to do something, we want it to be successful. We don't want it to cause undue hardship where we're right back into the trauma drama that we've had in the prior years. So if we do a tier system, which I think came out, I'm not sure, that the first go around would be people who are in good, good standing, however we define that, and a temporary state license, they can maybe proceed. And then at a certain point in time, whether it's January 2020 or what have you, then we go to those people who were, those cultivators who were in good standing and did not have a temporary license. Because then who's, who's first? I mean, we're going to be going with 300, 400 people, I mean, I don't know how many, but two months ago, it was 190 something that had, were in good standing and had a license, temporary state license.
My recollection was those who had not been denied was, were in the range of about 300, 350.
On top of the one.
Well, I would include the 190.
Inclusive.
Yes, inclusive.
Okay.
Your, your idea, Marita, would be let's tier it and let's go like this and we can grow down the road or?
Yes.
If it makes sense?
Yes. I mean, at some point, we have to say, if we say there's 300 and staff's already said we can't manage 300, then we're already setting the program up to fail.
Right.
And not only for the county, but for those people who make that investment.
May I mention something that has to do with the state law is part of the reason we're talking about state temp licensure was to facilitate that those people could actually get a provisional license based on that they were putting an application for an annual. That's going to end at the end of this year in December. So that would facilitate that those people that were in good standing with state temporary licenses could possibly move forward next year. But the people that would put in, that were in, let's just say, good standing without state temp, temporary licenses would have to put in for an annual license later on that would be processed without a provisional and would have to wait much longer. So then there comes in your tier system because that could take as much as a year or longer as everyone knows it's dealing with the state right now. So I think right now, I know I did bring it up, but our best way to move forward is to stick with the original 190 and temp licensure. And then we, if, if later on, we find this to be successful moving forward, then we can, then we can start, because of the time constraints and the way things work, we can open it back up next year for amendment to, to our ordinance if we so choose.
So keeping it the way it is.
Yeah.
What's the more definition of ordinance?
I, I, that, that, that's our best control right now and I do not want to open it up to 350 people and overloading our staff and putting us back in the situation we were again with a possible land rush. That's not going to happen on my watch.
Marita, you all right there?
Yes.
I'm all right with the two. Supervisor Toffenow?
Yeah, I'm fine with what staff has written here. I would like to add though, that current, also we're current with our taxes.
I think that would be implied under. Supervisor Mills?
And based upon what the sheriff has said, there's a possibility that some of the 190 may not be able to participate anyway.
Very well.
So.
Move on to two B, Peter? Do you have clarification you need?
Yes.
I have a comment on two B. I would like to add unclassified, I believe that should be included.
Under two B.
Two B.
Two B one. You want to include it under two B one, which is the zone parcels? Yeah, 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 sorry. Everybody else, what do you think? Supervisor Stopper?
I, I agree with Marita. Unclassified was set away, aside quite some time ago for properties that were, had certain uses on them so that they could continue or be grandfathered in. But more so, having worked on the general, draft general plan update, a lot of these unclassified properties will be going to working lands, which include quite a other, which include, which is the back zoning, which would include A1, RA, not all of them, but a majority of them. So I think when we consider U, it needs to be over a certain amount of acreage, but I think it doesn't need an administrative use permit or a conditional use permit. I think that would force them to have to go through a zoning amendment process that's already going to happen if we update our general plan. And that would overload staff with 40 or more unclassified properties of having to go through a zoning amendment at that time, when I don't think it needs to be part of the process. But that's just my position.
Okay, so the position is to include U as part of this. Okay, so the position is to include U as part of this nondiscretionary permit. Supervisor Toffenelli, do you add?
Yeah, I'm going to have to disagree with that. You have U listed under 2C, and I think it's listed under 2C because a lot of the U's go up against RR, or with, or there's some of them are surrounded by subdivisions or touch subdivisions. And that's where most of our complaints were, within subdivisions themselves, less than 20 acres or 20 acres. So, I'm in favor of keeping it under a conditional use permit, and when we get down there, I'm not in favor of the 20 acres. I'm in favor with staff's report. I'm not even in favor under 2B with the number of acres that are listed here, because even A1, AP, and GF, a lot of it is up against subdivisions. And that's, you go to that small of acreage, that's where a lot of our problems came from. So...
If it's all right, I want to try to keep it in small bites. Supervisor Mills, you had a point you wanted to make?
Yes, considering what then Captain Macedo said about the 20 acres and less was the primary problem for law enforcement, is that anything, 20 acres or less should not even be part of this discussion, simply to minimize that conflict that was clearly stated. Am I correct?
It is. After doing a little bit of checking, if you go into, I just call them the 20s, Circle 20, Bar 20, Diamond 20, the M24 Ranch, those are classified as 20-acre ranches, but if you look at them, they're 20.07, they're 22, they're 24, they're 20.30. Those are RR areas. I said this back in 2016, do not put this stuff into the residential, rural residential areas. So if you have to make it 25 acres to keep it out of there, do 25 acres. Keep it out of the rural residential area. Because that was the problem that we were having. It causes the public to call and complain because one of the odors, the traffic, and everything else that goes along with it. We have numerous areas in this county, and if you guys have talked, and we have talked behind doors about allowing multiple sites or multiple grows on single sites, I'm okay with that, because it's going to let us be able to control things a little bit better. So if somebody has 100 acres and you want to allow them to have four sites, four growers on that site, I don't have a problem with that. But please, do not put it in the rural residential areas again.
I just want, I just want to say, I was strictly talking about unclassified, and I do agree with the sheriff and Mr. Toffenelli when it comes to rural residential. It does not belong in rural residential. That was a major issue that happened within my district, and I had to deal with when I was on the planning commission prior, during 2016. A lot of these rural residential areas even had, they don't allow other commercial uses, but that's a whole nother conversation. So I concur when it comes to rural residential. I think that it should not be part of this. But when it comes to unclassified or other things, look, you could have 300 acres, and it could be bordering a lot of stuff. So, I mean, as long as the setbacks are set in place properly, that should, that should take care of a lot of these issues. But, yes, rural residential's out.
If I might, so, let's break this into pieces. Who's in favor of the rule of unclassified being included in the list under 2B1? So, for nondiscretionary. Who's in favor of unclassified being in that list?
I am.
Supervisor Mills?
No.
Supervisor Stoffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
No, not without a conditional use permit.
Okay, I agree, yes. So, continues. I think your next question on that, since this conversation was going, was the minimum parcel size.
Yes.
Is that where I think we're going?
When it comes to unclassified?
No, when it comes to...
Primarily RRs.
Yeah. Well, you know, we got here on 2B high, we've got minimum parcels of 10, and we've got staff recommendation of 20.
So, so, last time, you decided that 10-acre minimum parcel size was appropriate for A1, AP, and general forest GF. 20-acre minimum parcel size for the residential agriculture. And based on concerns expressed by the sheriff and our experience, we felt that 10 acres was too small. But again, this is a policy call by this board, so that was our recommendation. Turn it back to you for discussion.
Supervisor Mills, do you want to start?
I would agree. It's too small. It's too small. It just creates too much rub with neighbors. And, too small.
Supervisor Calley, your light's on?
Well, yeah. I support, if we're on 2C, I support...
We're still on 2B.
2B.
The minimum parcel size for the use by right.
I'm sticking with staff recommendation.
Staff recommended 20.
Well, this is one that we wanted to bring back for discussion. Your previous action was 10 for those zones and 20 for RA. We'll also need to establish a minimum parcel size for unclassified. So that's where we're at right now, is what's your appropriate minimum parcel size for a registration or a permit, a by right permit?
Mr. Mauer, we, when we go through the process of changing the unclassifieds, I'm forgetting the cannabis issue, are the, aren't the unclassifieds, a lot of them going to be A1, AP, and general forest?
It is, there's a range of zone that could, it depends on the general plan land use designation. And maybe it'd be a good time to clarify, because I know there was some confusion based on some comments I received, that the, the general plan land use designation, so the umbrella of, is not zoning. So we'll have working lands or rural residential, you know, other natural resource designations. Beneath those designations are the zones. So, it's going to depend on what the land use designation is for that site, as well as surrounding properties, the parcel size. So it could vary. It could be anything from, you know, rural residential agriculture to, it wouldn't go into AP, because that would be a Williams net contract, but likely it'd be RA, A1, or perhaps general forest if it's up in the forested area. And there's even a possibility that it could be RR because of, you know, we have smaller, we have five-acre unclassified zone parcels as well that are probably surrounded by rural residential.
Understanding that, from what I recall, most of them were done per size. So we would have RTA and RTB, which would be the rural residential designations. And those were like 0 to 10 acres and, or somewhere in that vicinity.
Five to 20 is the range for the...
Five to 10.
You're right. But RTA was one, and then the RTB was the larger one of the two,
I believe, if I'm in the right order. And so, at a point where those would be done at 20 acres, that's where we would, that's where we should start thinking about our line being 20 acres or larger.
I would say any land that's zoned unclassified, that is proposed to be, and assume it's adopted, a rural transition designation, would end up being zoned rural residential. Anything in the working lands designation would either be res-ag or A1 agriculture, general agriculture, depending again on the specifics of the site. And the natural resources designation would likely be general forest or general agriculture. Again, we have to go through that exercise and determine which, what's appropriate for those sites.
So, staff, staff recommended 20-acre minimum on those A1, AP, GF, and now, we've now included U into that. So, is there any consensus for that minimum parcel size? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I disagree. I'd rather see it 40 acres. And if, and also caveat to that, if any of those zones butt up against RR zone, that a conditional use permit process goes through, simply so the surrounding neighbors are notified of it and can submit their comments to it, and possibly the grow site can be located further away from the property lines bounding RR. A lot of these have, like I said earlier, in the U's, and you made the point that some of them are going to be rural residential. Even 20-acre ones will be RR, because they butt up or they're surrounded in that. If you're asking for problems, even the sheriff knows that, when he came up and made the comment, at least 25 acres. And with, at least with a conditional use permit, if they are abutting in RR, that we can have notification, again, and can locate the grow site the furthest away from any of the property lines. I think those issues need to be addressed. And again, I'm a proponent for 40 acres minimum on these, just because of the issues that we've had in the past and the chaos they created.
The question is, first is 20 acres and accepting it. Supervisor Mills or Supervisor Stoffer, you guys want to weigh in?
I'm not going to accept anything less than 40 acres being there, but I, and I also agree that the neighboring property owners need to be able to be aware of what's going on, be able to have some mitigation measures if necessary put in place, so that we don't disturb their free full use and enjoyment of their neighboring property. That's one of the things that the UO didn't really consider, is we just dropped, dropped these into various places and the neighbors were left to deal with it as a result. So, 40 acres is a good minimum starting point, and I think that when we finally reached the point of a ban, we were talking about 100 acres or more, if you recall back in January 2018. So, 40 acres is a, is a good starting number. If we start looking at smaller than that, then there's always going to be some kind of conflicts that are going to come in with neighbors. And I would prefer not to get into those conflicts.
Supervisor Stoffer, you want 20 acres or where are you at?
I'm not in favor of a conditional use permit on anything that borders rural residential. I had this conversation before. The county, rural residential stands for no rhyme or reason in my mind with the way this county's checker boarded with it. It, there isn't probably, hardly even a few, even 300-acre properties that doesn't border RR somewhere. So, you know, if, once we get back to setbacks, if there's an RR on one side, then maybe that setback on the RR side could be exponentially larger to mitigate it. But this would put so many more, through such more of a process, adding a whole nother level of bureaucracy. So the conditional use permit is no. But I'm willing to debate the, the minimum size, but I'm not willing to go to 40 on it. The 20-acre point where there's 20.05s and 23s, that, that's, that's got some clout to it, because there's plenty of HOAs that have their own rules that got grows inside them. But, you know, I think we need to have a little more discussion on the minimum size.
Merita?
20 acres, and I'll support an AUP.
On what?
You can have a 20-acre grow on, oh, I'm sorry, rural residential. I thought that's...
No, we're not there yet.
I don't want to start nickel-diming, oh, well, you have 23. Well, you have 24.5. I mean, 20 acres.
You're talking 2C. Okay, so we're talking 20, we're talking about item 2B1, minimum acreage size on A1, AP, GF, and U zones.
I'm going to leave it at 10 acres.
All right. I am at, I am at 20. I'm going to go with the staff recommendation on that. We will get to 2B2 next, but, so we've got Gary and Dennis at 40, Ben's open, and Rita's at 10 acres.
For, we're talking A1, AP?
We're talking about item 2B1, which is a nondiscretionary permit for...
A1, AP, GF?
Mr. Chair? I hate to interrupt, but it's very confusing, because you're referring to how things are numbered in the staff memo, and everybody else is seeing that, and it's not the same thing. So when you say 2B1, nobody knows where you are. Sorry.
All right.
Okay.
So we're on 2B, which is, in the staff report broken into two items. We'll break this into, so, under A1, AP, GF, and U, what is the minimum for nondiscretionary permit?
With just, just those four, four zonings included, I'm good with 20. Because none of those are in the HOAs or residential areas.
Okay, so now I've got two 40s and two 20s.
I'll go.
And a 10.
I'll go 20.
All right. Peter, from the board, it seems that there's a consensus that for those four zones, a nondiscretionary permit, minimum acreage is 20.
And now it applies to unclassified, so all five zones.
Includes unclassified.
I'm sorry? So all five zones, A1, AP, GF, RA, and?
No, I haven't talked RA.
You haven't talked RA yet.
Okay, so, and unclassified, 20-acre minimum.
Now we'll talk about RA.
20 acres.
20 acres. AUP with 20 acres?
No. AUP, nondiscretionary.
You want it, you don't want it?
As staff recommended.
Okay, so, say, I'm sorry, did I say that?
RA, 20 acres, nondiscretionary.
Supervisor Mills, your light's on?
40 acres.
Nondiscretionary?
Nondiscretionary.
Supervisor Stoffer?
I'm going to reiterate a question I brought up last time discussing this, that actually Dennis answered as to no, but are there any RAs, 20 acres, inside HOAs and other residential, well, mostly it would be HOAs or townships.
Most of the, what we consider residential subdivision or zone, RR, or something smaller like R1. I don't believe, I cannot say categorically, there are no subdivisions that have an RA zoning. But for the most part, I am not aware of any subdivisions that were created with that zoning.
In the current state file maps, in Calaveras County, there are none.
Okay.
And I would concur with them. I did look quite extensively, but there's no way I could get my eyes on every darn property in the county. But, so, with that said, 20.
Supervisor Stoffer?
40.
Okay, so we have two 20s, two 40s, and I will go with the 20s. All right. Peter?
So just, 20-acre minimum for a sort of by right permit process in A1, AP, general forest, unclassified, and residential agriculture. Okay. So then, under 2C, we talked about a discretionary permit for other zoning. This was somewhat taken care of in the previous one we discussed, unclassified. The question is, is there some category of parcels, parcel size and zoning that you would want to have some type of discretionary permit? And I think the zoning that is left over is your RR zoning. It hasn't really been discussed.
First question is, do we want to have discretionary permit for RA at less than 20? They've already, it's nondiscretionary at over 20, so we're talking under 20s.
So, so I guess the question would be the two-part question. One would be, do you want a discretionary permit for any one of the zones that we just identified for, on parcels less than 20 acres? And then, the second part would be, do you want to allow a discretionary permit process for another zoned parcel? And this would be particularly applied to the RR zone.
So, how do you want to answer that?
So why don't we just first talk about, do we want to have, allow for cultivation with a discretionary permit, a use permit some sort, in the A1, AP, general forest, U, or res-ag zone?
Do we want to have?
Less than 20 acres.
Any farms of less than 20 acres. Supervisor Calley, your light's on?
Yeah, I would like it, but there's not the votes for it. So, if the question is, do we want a discretionary permit on A1, AP, GF, is that what I heard you say, Mr. Mauer?
So, last time... So last time we had talked about, you had set a by right limit of 10 acres and then 20 acres for RA, and we talked about the potential for a use permit process for RR and for parcels between 10 and 20 acres on the RA zone. And so now that we've bumped up the minimum parcel size for all of those zones, do you want to allow for some type of discretionary permit for smaller parcels with those zones? And/or do you want to allow for a permit process in the RR zone?
For me, because one rule doesn't necessarily fit every single situation, I would support an AUP for those under 20 acres for the RA, the unclassified, A1, AP, GF.
Nothing under 20 discretionary permit. Subdivisions have to be taken off the table.
Supervisor Toff, no?
I would not support anything in this category, 2C.
Non-discretionary. I mean, go.
No sizes, none of this at all, RR, U, R, 20, under 10 to 20 acres.
Supervisor Stopper?
The two supervisors on my right and left both have very good points. I mean, this is a lot of the stuff that we've dealt with since 2016 that has caused us and put us through the strife, and I understand that. Just because someone applies for an administrative use permit or a conditional use permit does not mean they're going to be able to move forward, and it's a very costly process. I just, if, if you're going to go through that costly process, you can afford a piece of property that's larger to move forward.
Would you support taking 2C off the table?
I'm thinking it does.
Thank you.
Many other uses that you, we do allow for administrative use permit or a conditional use permit because, look, Rita's right also, one size does not fit all. So there, for some reason, there's a 10 acre plot surrounded by 100 acre plots out in the middle of Mountain Ranch. Someone could apply for a conditional use permit, doesn't mean they're going to go through it, so I could, I could support that.
You're supporting?
An administrative use, administrative use permit, but, you know, I'm, I'm really hesitant to even bring RR into the conversation.
So you're looking at, so Rita's, make sure I get this right, Rita. You're saying that it could be an administrative use permit or a conditional use permit on those categories that we just outlined, A1, AP, GF, RA and U at less than 20 acres if they go through the permit?
Correct.
Where you at, Ben?
I'd be flip to this.
We haven't talked about RR yet. Let's circle back.
Okay, yeah, I know, it's part of C, just a little bit lower, I apologize. I could support that, doesn't mean it's going to happen, so, yeah.
I would, I would only support that under a conditional use permit. I think we have to make the bar very high. If anybody pops off, and it's, I'm going to hold this line really close today, so everybody's on warn, I will warn you and then I will ask you to leave. This is a very hard subject, we're working hard, and I believe it's behalf, and we'd appreciate if you'd be respectful while we do that. Thank you.
You know, Chair, I appreciate you talking about setting the bar high. The conditional use permit will provide neighbors that opportunity to weigh in. It's, it's just got to be there. So that's why I talked about discretionary. But we get to the RRs, the 2C RRs, that's a different world for me, especially when it comes to the number of subdivisions. And those subdivisions and homeowners associations, they can build their own discretionary decisions on land use as well. They're, they're not bound strictly by what the county's limitations are. So we have to always keep that in mind as well.
I agree. So let's, let's go back. We're talking about conditional or AUP. I think there's three votes that have taken on that question, but we don't have a consistent message on if it's a CUP or AUP. I'm suggesting a CUP.
It would have to be a CUP in, in my mind, because the weighing in of the neighbors is crucial, and this is the why we would let the, we would put it forward as such because the weighing in of the neighbors is part of mitigating the issue.
Mr. Mauer, under an AUP, do you notify the neighbors, talk to the neighbors?
We do provide notice. My hesitation for doing it under AUP is that I have the approving authority or the planning director has the approving authority on that. I'm reluctant to take on that responsibility, and I think that is something that is appropriate for the planning commission to, to do.
Okay, I'll fold.
So, make sure I've got this right. So we're saying that on those elements, we said A1, AP, general forest, RA and U, we will allow between sites that are 10 acres or greater, a opportunity to go apply for a CUP. Is that correct? I got that right?
Yeah, not to be below 10 acres.
Okay, you got that?
Okay.
All right.
So next item 2D, or for those who don't qualify, they have the right?
Actually, Peter, we got to take on RR.
Oh, I'm sorry, RR. Just keep getting, trying to move forward. So RR zone, and I think that's where really the, the rub seems to be with that zoning. Do we want to allow it at all within that zone, or do you want to have some opportunity for someone to, to apply for a permit?
I support RR conditional use permit. I understand RR is controversial. I think most of the concerns came up when you were in a more urban type subdivision versus a 20 acre subdivision, you know, where you had two and a half acres and five acres and six acres or 10 acres. 20 acres is a lot of property and under a conditional use permit. And we have 20 acres in, as Ben mentioned earlier, in the middle of an A1 or general forest area, and so now we're saying, you can't do it. I just think with a conditional use permit, the concerns can be taken into consideration because we have RRs that are in subdivisions, RRs that are not in subdivisions. Cut to the chase, RR conditional use permit, and let the chips fall where they may when we go through the CUP process.
Peter, if I can ask, there's no restriction on, if you've got 80 acre RR, rezoning it if you go through the regular process, correct?
Correct. Yes, it would be the right for someone to apply for a zoning amendment. Again, it's discretionary, it's a legislative act, your board gets that final say. If it's appropriate for rezone to, say, A1, then that would be, and we've processed several of those in the past.
Just like if you were any other property.
Yes.
Part of the process, if we did put forward a conditional use permit, may require them to rezone it?
No, that was under the unclassified zoning. Our code requires that if we issue a discretionary permit, because it is an interim zone, that they rezone the property from.
Okay.
So RR, I can't, Supervisor Calloway, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Go ahead, Dennis.
By the definition of rural residential, and you know how many times we've gone over this, of this is residential use first, all other uses secondary. We flipped that and, and pushed it into an option. I can't support rural residential here. If they want to go to a rezone or they want to find another way to, for land use, great, but not in rural residential zones, just by definition.
Supervisor Stopper, or excuse me, Supervisor Calloway, something you want to add?
You mentioned about, you know, you had a large RR parcel, you could request a rezone. We're now asking people to spend more money. I meant, are we going to be, we're talking about being a business friendly county. Well, we're doing everything we can to make this a non-business friendly scenario, and I think, you know, we, we set up the base, if they choose to do it, they do, they, anybody can rezone. Anybody can ask for a rezoning. I mean, you can have two acres and ask for it to be an M1 zone and then you're in the middle of Meadowmont, doesn't mean you're going to get it. So I, I'm trying to balance the need of those people who've made investments, who go back to item 2A, prior registration and good standing with a temporary state license, and they're on RR. They've done everything, they've played by the rules, and now we're saying, oh no, because you're in the middle of Circle 20 or Bart 20 or someplace in Mountain Ranch. I, I think that's disingenuous on our part.
Supervisor Stopper, you wanted to say something?
We already said no when we put forward a ban, and I know there's a lot of people in this room that aren't going to like it, but you have an option, a zoning amendment. If I wanted to start a farm, I would not go out looking for rural residential property. I would buy rural residential property, which I have, to put my house on. No rural residential, you can go through zoning amendment.
Okay, so I've got one yes for rural residential, one no, Supervisor Toff Nelly? Supervisor Mills?
No rural residential.
Supervisor, two no rural residential, Supervisor Toff?
I've never supported RR. I would never vote for RR. I've been very consistent since the beginning on RR. It's created nothing but problems. I don't live in a gated community. I live out in RR in the country, so it's going to affect a lot of people I already know, so.
No RR. Next question.
So on this one, it's just sort of a confirmation that people do have the right to, to apply for a zoning amendment if their zoning does not, they have that right anyway, but it's just sort of confirmation of that, so unless there's any further discussion on that issue. The next item was three, the timing of cultivation, and we just wanted to make it clear, I believe that the board confirmed that they needed to get whatever permits they needed from the county, and they needed to get a state license before cultivation can begin. We're not going to go back to the urgency ordinance where you can grow until you're determined not, to not, not be legal. We want to make sure that all the Is are dotted and Ts are crossed prior to cultivation. So that was the direction that I thought we'd heard. I know there, there's some other issues along those lines, so I'll turn it back to the board for discussion.
Is there any consent around this? Everybody has to wait till they?
No, no consent on my part at the moment. Again, I go back, we want an ordinance. We are also saying you had to have prior registration and a temporary state permit. So, and we're trying to do this so people can get their provisional or whatever the word is that begins with. Why not have some kind of conditional approval where they could at least start their, I know I'm learning more than I want to, their mothers or their clones on submittal, after they submit the application, they've started the process. And if pending the local permit, again, that they're going through, then if they don't get it, then the plants have to be destroyed. But we're waiting for this long process to take place, and I just thought maybe if there was some support for conditional approval, I understand what Mr. Mauer says, I understand the concerns that the board had gone through in the past, but either we're on this train or we're not.
Supervisor Mills?
Mr. Mauer, is there any other business that you can start up in Calaveras County? This way. Take your time. I would like to see all the ducks in a row and all the approvals met, all the requirements met, before anything goes to work. Before you light the bonfire, let's be sure we've got the perimeter set and everybody's agreeing to it. To be able to, to do as Supervisor Calloway suggests is to push us back into a potential urgency ordinance condition, and I'm not in favor of it.
I'll assume that was a rhetorical question.
It's a rhetorical question, but thank you for letting me do that.
Supervisor, Supervisor Stopper?
Would the timeline, as it may be, if anything comes forward this winter? Number three, when applying to the state for a permit, applicant shall be provided by the county a conditional local authorization letter to facilitate the state licensure process. The reason I would ask for this is because if we're processing 190 at largest case scenario, that takes the county some time. So a local authorization letter to the state so that they may move forward with the state process, at which ti, at which time, look, the state, the state qualifications on, on registration and everything are far more, there are larger hurdles to cross now than even with the urgency ordinance in the past. So this helps facilitate the process of getting the state licensure and our local authority over it at the same time, and that way they can, the process is, runs more smooth.
So are you suggesting that it be like a concurrent licensing process between the state and the county so that they apply to us, they have the right then to apply to the state? I'd like to defer to counsel on that. My understanding is they actually have to have a local permit before they can apply or in order to apply.
There's, the, the way I understand it with the, with the past licensure, if you were in good standing in the past, you may apply to the state, and that's where the non-annual, but the provisional license comes into it. So there, there are multiple things in there, but I think, I know that talking to other counties, that there has been the state working with the counties on moving forward, and there's other things I'm going to bring up later where the state's actually helping pay for some of the compliance checks and everything on some of the properties so that it doesn't cost the county. But that's a whole nother part. I'm sticking with number three right now, and it's something to consider and possibly reach out to the state and see, but to get a provisional license, all you had to do was be in good standing and have the county authority to move forward.
Supervisor Mills, your lights on?
Yeah, just continuing the conversation is, is that we want to be sure that we're incentivizing those that do come forward and, and get into this process, that we don't backtrack over what we did under the urgency ordinance of dragging things out and not having staff capable of processing in a timely manner and all of the things that we did. I think we learned some valuable lessons from that. So the only way to do that is how do we incentivize our staff, as well as the, the person who's applying, to get this done as timely a manner as possible so that they can get their boots on the ground and go to work if that's what they're wanting to do. And, and to drag it out. And to drag it out six months or a year is not productive to anybody on either side. So I just want to ensure that we have all the ducks in a row before we're saying, put the plants in the ground, to ensure that we're not going to go through that process again.
That's why I'm making my suggestion about it, to move forward with the state, because, you know, to get your plants in the ground, there are so many requirements when it comes to just what soil you use and everything else. And Dennis is right, if we're going to move forward with this, we need to incentivize everyone to obey the law. And, you know, there is a certain point, you know, where else can I, I can't put in a liquor store without being fully permitted and licensed before, you know, and start selling liquor.
So maybe, let me call the questions. Who's in favor of keeping it that you have to get all your permits and licenses in line before cultivation? Kerry?
Yes, I'm in favor of that. And by the way, most of them aren't in ground, they put them in pots above the ground, sorry.
Supervisor Stopper?
If the ground's three feet above, it's still ground. Anyways, I'm in favor of having the permit processed before, but I also would like to, then, as we work forward on this ordinance, please look into the authorization letter and then, you know, let the planning commission know about it, and if there is a possibility, then maybe it can be part of the process in the future.
I'd like to have Julie weigh in, because she's done some research on this.
I just want to, I think it'd be easier to just explain the process to the board and if we can get directions so that we know what to write, it would be easier for staff. The state requires, prior to licensure, some sort of letter or authorization that states that we're, they're in compliance with the local permitting scheme, or whatever local scheme there is. And so the policy question before the board would be, did we want to allow, do you want to sign off that people are in compliance before they have applied for and received the permit that you have stated you would like to see before cultivation takes place? That's the question before you.
Yes. Got two for yes. Supervisor Mills?
Yes.
Yes? Supervisor Calloway, if you are a no? So everything's got to be locked up before we go forward.
Okay.
We have to have one more before I'm breaking.
Okay, so number four was just whether you want or not to establish any kind of cap, and I think the...
Prepona?
Prior direction was that we were going to limit it by the numbers of prior registered growers in good standing and by the zoning restrictions, rather than have an arbitrary number of some sort that says, okay, we're only going to allow 50 or 100 or whatever that number is. Any changes to that?
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm good with it.
Question is, go with the zoning rather than a number?
Right.
Supervisor?
This is one I have a hard time with because the amount of permits per person is different than the total amount of applicants. So they don't necessarily fall hand in hand. I would say with the state being, we shouldn't box ourselves in and overly specific and limit to prior viable applicants, but do, we'll limit the prior viable applicants, but do not count the number of permits. This way, if someone were to have 200 acres and be able to have multiple permits on it, then that could be an option under one LLC. Well, it's kind of, they kind of go hand in hand, that's why we're...
Let's do four first, let's check that out. So the question stands, want a numerical cap or just use the zoning as we're moving forward?
Use the zoning.
Okay. Zoning?
Zoning.
All right, there you go. We will return at 1:30, and we'll start on number five. Apologize, we're a little late behind and everything, but thanks very much. Good afternoon, and welcome back to the Calaveras County February, excuse me, Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Maurer, I believe you'll pick us up where we left off on number five.
Number five, yes. So this was a decision that we would allow more than one premise per parcel. I think we get into more detail on that later on, but it confirmed that we were going to allow more than one premise on parcel.
And we'll break, we'll dig into that more in the later item under your questions.
Right. So then going to number six.
Wait a second, let's just get through, is everybody still okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Number five, that's the holes. Multiple premises. Well, yeah, there was no change. I know, you have to keep track of this.
So then number six was whether or not the board wanted to consider other license types other than the dispensaries or medical retailers that we already permit under chapter 1791.
Outside of the fact that I would like us to bring back 1791, but I'll discuss that later, I again want to bring up the idea of the use of dispensaries, I mean, excuse me, distribution, that if you own a business and you want to take your crop or your wine or whatever it is to market, you can do that, and I don't think it should be any different for the cultivators, if they want to sell their product themselves versus go through another distribu, through a distributor, they can do that. Also, I don't know if this is where, and Mr. Maurer, you can correct me, but, well, you can't correct me because I'm a supervisor.
I can provide you advice.
Oh, your advice, okay. And I put in on number six, I called it number 6A, whatever, a distribution low impact is low impact, but that if we wanted to have a distribution business, and that's your business, that it would be in the M1, M2, and M4 zones. So that's sort of two separate issues. The cultivator being able to distribute his or her own product, and I want to be a distributor for the cultivators in Calaveras County, I have, excuse me, do it on M1 and 2 and 4.
So I think those are two separate issues in a way that there is the, and maybe Ethan or Julie can weigh in on the license, there's different license types, and I think you can do self-distribution if I'm not mistaken. So if you're a cultivator and you want to, you know, transport your crop to a testing lab or something like that.
What about to?
But if you wanted to be, have a separate distributor's license where you pick up other people's product and deliver it to, you know, to a testing lab or like a wholesaler...
But if I want to sell my product to retail establishments as the cultivator, can I do that?
No, there's, the state license system does not allow the cultivator, the cultivator has to send the cannabis to a distributor who then takes it to a dispensary.
So can I get a distributor's license if I choose to as the cultivator?
So I don't know, Ethan might know in terms of whether the same, you're talking on the same premises or separate premises?
Well, it could be, you know, I mean, I'm sort of beyond my total job description here. I grow the product and then I have it tested, or a testing lab comes, I have the product, it's been tested, it's sealed, and now I want to sell it myself versus going through a third party where I'm now having to pay more money to, why can't I get my own?
The state license, I mean, I don't, Ethan might know more than I do about the microbusiness license, which might be the one exception to where certain things can be done under a single license and for very small quantities, and I'll let Ethan speak to that. But for the typical or the larger commercial licenses, unless you're in a microbusiness category, the cultivator, as a matter of state law, cannot be their own distributor or their own...
Of their own product?
Right. Correct.
Yeah, a distribution license is a separate license type, yeah.
I understood that, but I don't understand why I can't sell my own product directly.
Because the state says you can't.
Well, all right. And I understand about the license.
And so there's one exception, which is the microbusiness license, and I didn't know, we were getting into that today, so I have, I've researched the cultivation regulations, but if Mr. Turner knows more about how the microbusiness license works, I can turn that over to him.
Okay. So that's one. The second is allowing the business of distribution, which is low impact. I mean, distributors come into our county all the time, or they were, coming into our county all the time, and now we have an opportunity, somebody can open a distributing business and be the distributor for Calaveras or whomever, because we're allowing them in, but we won't allow them to be a business in Calaveras, seems like an oxymoron.
So perhaps the way to address this would be to hold the board to see if you want to discuss opening this up to things, to licenses other than cultivation, and if so, then we could get into the details of the types of license and what would be the appropriate zone. And we may not be able to answer some of the questions, because we have...
Supervisor Stopper?
If we're to follow through with a use like this, I'm in favor of keeping the entire supply chain within the county. Let's, distribution, processing, testing labs, not, I'm not willing to bring forward manufacturing right now, I mean, the general consensus right now is it goes boom, and even though we know there are other ways of processing, they're non-volatile, we aren't ready for manufacturing in Calaveras County in my position, in my opinion. But distribution nurseries do need to be considered as part of this ordinance, or a ordinance. Distribution gives local control for taxation purposes and environmental compliance. Testing labs are something to consider also for local control environmentally and can also help special districts such as our water, environmental health, and other agriculture such as grapes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. My position on this, though, is that I believe the work that would have to go forth to include this in the, in this ordinance would be quite a bit more extensive, and it's something we could move forward possibly separately later. I'm not sure if it needs to be included at this time, is my position. I do think it's a good idea. I do want local control, and having distribution centralized within Calaveras County gives us an opportunity to know what's going in and what's coming, going out, you know, coming in, going out, and it gives us access to the data that's coming back from the labs at the same time as the state does if we put it into our ordinance properly. So it gives the county local control, not only for purposes of environmental impact, but taxation purposes for knowing weights and measures and so on.
Supervisor Stopper, it's good points, and I admit, I'm not expert on distribution by any means.
I'm not an expert.
Do you want to take that on in this ordinance, or are you proposing that we wait?
I, my personal opinion, and staff can probably correct me on a lot of this, is that it's something that can wait a little bit longer as opposed to cultivation because it's not, it's going to come down the road just a little bit later on the process. So when it comes to some of the hurdles that we have to go through with the environmental impact report and so on, and if any addendums need to be made in the future, I think that it may be considered a little bit later on as opposed to right now, but that's, maybe staff can correct me on some of that.
Well, I don't correct board members, but...
No.
I would appreciate your expert input, Peter.
I do believe that including other license types and uses would expand the scope of the ordinance and certainly add time to the development of the ordinance. Right now, we have an EIR for the ban ordinance that discussed a much broader regulatory cultivation ordinance, but to get into other uses that weren't discussed in that ordinance would require additional environmental review. So if the intent is to get something on the books in a relatively quick fashion, to expand it into other uses might challenge that timeframe, but, you know, it's a policy call of what you want to do. If we want to go into other uses, that's certainly your choice.
Supervisor Calloway, you have a question?
So, Mr. Maurer, if I'm a distributor from outer county, and I come in and I pick up products here, you're not doing an EIR on me, so, but if I want to open a distributor business, I mean, I don't have any problem, I'm going to not take that off the table in terms of a business, okay? The point that I'm still a little, I'm not clear on, I want to sell my product myself, it's Paddis testing and da-da-da. What I hear in you saying is that I cannot do that. I thought I had remembered reading somewhere that I could, but...
Other than through a microbusiness license.
Okay.
That is my understanding.
I just...
And I think, I know since I'm talking with Ethan and Peter, you know, we looked at the direction we had received at the first study session and prepared based on that, and since we thought we were doing cultivation only, we are not as prepared as we would be to answer questions you have of us, to the extent you have any on the other license types, but it's definitely a policy decision whether or not you want to add that now.
Sorry, let's see if we've got support around distribution. Supervisor Calloway, is it a yes?
I'm a yes.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm not in support of any other license types at this time.
Supervisor Stopper?
I am supportive of them, but it's how to proceed in the best way is what I'm looking at.
He's a yes.
I'm going to let him speak. Do you want to sit in his chair?
She would love to sit in my chair.
You can present your own pick.
I am. I can be supportive of it, but we can wait till after public comment to really nail up the final decision on it, but I can be supportive of working on it. I have always been supportive of adding distribution in it because of the local control that adds to it, but also that would include such things as testing labs and so on, because I do like the local control.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I don't think so at this time. I think we have staff's handful just this ordinance right now that we were talking about for cultivation. I think adding any more onto it with the general plan coming, I just don't see it, adding more onto it.
I'm not a big fan of adding onto this either, but I think it's an important element. I don't know enough about it to frankly have a strong opinion on it, so I would like to learn more. Perhaps when we go about writing this, you guys will be more in...
Perhaps when we go about writing this, you guys will be more, take a look, and something we can bring back and consider, but if it blows up the EIR, and it has a whole lot of time, and it might be a step two, as Supervisor Stopper suggested, I would like to learn more, because I just don't know enough to make a decision on that. So.
I'm going to agree with Jack, a step two is probably the best part of this process, and it definitely needs to be considered later. I think we definitely have a majority to move forward with it later, but let's be comprehensive on the cultivation right now.
Okay. So no change in it at this point? With the COT, with the asterisk, yeah. So the next item is number seven, requiring residents on the site. The board's direction was that we're not going to require that there be a permanent residence on the site. Any structures that are on it, and I use the term be permitted, and that might have been just a broad generality, must be in compliance with Title 15, you know, the county code as far as I'm concerned. So there's certain types of buildings that are exempt, but those are probably not the type that you typically see. Anything that's being used for processing, if you've got employees in there, they need to meet certain codes, and so that's, I believe, what the board's direction was on that. Do we need change?
As long as they meet Title 15, same as anyone else.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I remember now Under Sheriff Macedo speaking to this very issue when he made his presentation of saying it was important to have a residence or some way to get ahold of people on that particular site. Sheriff, do you have any opinions on this one way or the other? Because you're the one that's going to have to figure out who's where and what they're doing.
I'm not so certain that we have to have a residence on the site. I think the issue that Captain Macedo was talking, or Under Sheriff now, Macedo was talking about, was the ability to contact somebody that is working on the property. So I think that if we have someone that is responsible for the property, because we know a lot of these owners are not in the area, they're out of state, we just have to have a name of somebody and a phone number that we can contact and be able to meet them on that site if we need to access the site or have an ability to deal with the site. The biggest concern that I have is on the environmental side, that we have a lot of workers on the site and there's no facilities. That's probably the bigger issue, more than having a residence there. So that's something you guys are going to have to figure out how you're going to handle, because that's a problem.
Well, he spoke to the delays in making contact with whoever was responsible for the site under the UO.
Yeah. We're having a problem contacting people if there is a residence on the site. You know, if it's an illegal site, it's just that. I can't think of any legal sites where we're actually having an issue with being able to contact people because they were trying to do things right. It's the other side of the fence. But still, if you're going to have a site that does not have some type of facilities for workers to utilize, then there's an environmental issue. That would be more my concern as opposed to having a residence on the site. I mean, we have, if you guys are going to end up allowing people to do multiple sites on a single property, you know, Bill over here owns, you know, 100 acres, he's got three grows going on it, there has to be some type of facilities for these guys to use. I don't necessarily say that there has to be a house out there.
Okay. Appreciate your comment. Supervisor Stopper?
15. Title 15. Exactly. I concur with what they have written, you know, no permanent residence needs to be there. I think a lot of the environmental issues and code compliance, if someone doesn't have the proper facilities, we don't allow it to be on the ground as it is, and if someone's doing that, they're going to be violating code and possibly lose their license, so you better figure out how to get, you know, somebody to ship out some Blue Rooms and turn them over frequently, because that's what you're going to have to do.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, there's, in the farming industry, there's state standards. You can't just send workers out into the field to harvest or whatever and not have hand washing stations and have porta-potties and what have you. So I think that's what needs to be incorporated in here, is whether the state requires, plus the Title 15.
Then I would concur.
Okay, so it seems like we sense that there's no permanent residence required.
Next item regarding camping, and it's sort of tied in with this, we do allow temporary campings on property under the current zoning ordinances, and those same standards would just apply. What we wouldn't want to see is sort of a permanent campsite setup, you know, use of travel trailers or RVs and that kind of stuff that would be there on a more permanent basis.
So Peter, under county code, there's an exception with correct registration for boot fire survivors, that's currently uncovered, that's not going to change.
That would not change.
Thanks. What are your thoughts?
How effective are we at enforcing camping and RV use on properties right now?
I'd have to defer to code compliance on that one. I know that there are, you know, a long list of complaints that they're dealing with, I don't know how many of them relate to cannabis.
And I'm not talking about just cannabis farms, I'm just talking about countywide. And if we're going to write a law or have an ordinance in place that is not enforceable, that becomes almost a laughing stock, and this is one of those real sensitive issues where sometimes people, like in the boot fire zone, they need someplace to live, but in other places, I think it's been horribly abused.
Well, I would say that, you know, a place that has a permit of some sort, whether it be a simply building permit or use permit, or in this case, a cultivation permit, and we identify non-compliance, there's illegal camping going on, we won't issue that permit regardless of the type of permit is until that violation of the code is brought into compliance. So if there's camping going on, we would not sign off on the cultivation permit, or if we do a reinspection and, you know, camping is going on, we could potentially revoke that permit. So that would be the same thing that we would see with any type of permit that we process, so it would not be just simply, you know, cannabis growers that would be subject to this. Of course, if there's no permits, you know, someone just has acres out in the woods and they're camping on it, we don't know about it because we don't go out there and we haven't received a complaint, and I'm sure that happens a lot. But, you know, without knowing about it, there's really nothing that we can do.
I got a couple spots. You're here for a reason, I'm sure.
I am. As far as the camping goes, that was one of the things that was a very big problem, people parking motor homes, sleeping in tents, and again, we're back to the facilities issues. The people that we found with the motor homes were just dumping their sewage on the grounds. There cannot be any camping at all. I know that the county code says that you can camp for 14 days in a calendar year and not in one place, meaning one property, for more than that 14 days in any 30-day consecutive, any 30 consecutive days. So basically, they can be there for 14 days, and they have to leave to go to another property somewhere else, and they can't come back to that place for another, for the remainder of the year. And it just goes back to having a facility for these folks, and if they're going to be staying on site, they have to have some type of facilities if they're going to be sleeping and living and tending to their farms. And I think that's where Captain Macedo was talking about, you know, having a residence on the property because of the facility issues. The camping, we're doing flyovers, so we're going to be seeing the mobile homes and the camp tents and stuff like that out on these properties, so we'll be able to deal with that along with working with code compliance, but they cannot camp on these sites, period. It's just not feasible. I know the county code, and Peter can correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you actively have a building permit on your property, you can camp on your property while your home is being built. That's a different story.
So we allow a temporary permit for, you know, under construction? So while someone's building a house, they can use an RV or a travel trailer for temporary housing under construction?
It's, as always, tricky that our current codes are sufficient, I understand what you're saying, Sheriff, but, you know, then we're going to start saying, if your aunt comes by for two weeks, I mean, we could start, I mean, I don't want to set up a, we've already got a second class of citizen, we're doing, that we're making people feel like, if we start saying, we're not even going to let you park a van there or a trailer there for two weeks and stay within our code, I mean, I don't know, that seems.
I don't have a problem with them staying in the trailer for two weeks. It's after the two weeks.
And then that's a breaking of the code.
Exactly. And that's my point, that's, okay, maybe I need to be a little more specific, it's not the camping part of it, it's beyond that camping that they continue to stay there, and again, it falls back to the facilities.
And that's covered for the most part in the existing.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Stopper?
I can agree with camping and use of an RV will be prohibited except as permitted in county code. Hold everyone the same standard.
Okay. Supervisor Mills, do you have something else you want to add, or are you going to weigh in on this?
That's, we, not the same thing. We have a code in place, just enforce it.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
No, you know, we have a county code.
Supervisor Callaway? There you go.
Okay. Then, we decided that any appeals of the decisions on a cannabis registration application would be handled through the 806 code provisions rather than appeals hearing through the planning commission, except for a CUP where it has a provision to go to the planning commission.
Supervisor Mills, you want to start?
How long are we going to drag people through an appeals process this time?
It will be moved forward in a quicker.
Is it going to be short and sweet, or is it going to be going out four to six months?
Well, we are required to hold a hearing within 45 days of an appeal from the planning commission to the board. If we go into conditional use permit, the commission would be the approving authority with the right to appeal to the board. If it's a ministerial-type permit that the planning department would issue, then they would have a right to appeal that to a hearing officer, provision set up through 806, and Ethan, tell me how, what's the timeframe that those appeals typically take?
Those hearings can be set very quickly, and they can occur very quickly. In the past two years, we usually can set a hearing up within 15 days, and then once there's a ruling, it's final.
So you can be within 30 days, be through the process?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Supervisor Stopper?
I'm fine with the minister of hearing process, I don't want to put our planning commissioners through what we had to go through.
Well, we had to sue. Supervisor Toffenelli, where are you?
Yeah, I think the hearing officer, once we went to that, it sped everything along, so Ethan was involved in it, so I'm good with that.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Yes. Then, let's see, permit renewals, you had decided you wanted annual renewal process. And Supervisor Callaway?
I'm, I'm fine with that to a certain point. I think if you've been on good behavior, whatever, done everything for five years, we should be able to move to a two-year, three-year. I mean, we're continually making work, not only for ourselves, but for the business, and I don't understand why we have to do it forever, I mean, without a cap on it. I also am wondering if development agreements would be in this process.
I think that's a whole different issue to deal with.
Because, well, I bring it up, because this board might be saying, yes, you can have a business, and in two years, there's another board, and the rug's pulled out from them. So if someone wants a development agreement, we're not, I mean, they're not unique to Calaveras. Could that be possible, and why would it be? I mean, I don't know why we'd have to go into a lot more detail in that development agreement. Staff makes recommendations of what should be in a development agreement with the developer.
So I see development agreements, and one, they are projects under CEQA, so we'd have to do environmental analysis of what that development agreement says. Development agreement should be an, you know, exchange of benefits between the county and the party that you're agreeing with, and so, you know, you sit there and you negotiate. Typically, these are, development agreements are used for large projects that are going to take multiple years to develop, a large subdivision, specific plan development, that maybe have a 20-year timeframe for build-out. I'm not sure what benefit the county would get from a development agreement on a cannabis cultivation. I mean, we can change, you know, the permits would typically run with the land, the renewal would just be to ensure compliance with the standards. The state law requires an annual renewal of the state licensure, so it's not that we're, you know, be doing anything different than what the state's requiring. So it's just a matter of ensuring that they're still in compliance with the provisions of our code. I mean, certainly if the board is interested in considering development agreements, I just don't know what the benefit to the county would be in establishing those.
I think it gives a guarantee that we believe in you as a business to do things right, and we're not going out and checking all the time, and that they have, they are making an investment in Calaveras, they're paying their taxes, they're paying their permit fees, they're doing all these things, and what guarantees do they have? I mean, a development agreement could be for a specific, a 10-year period of time, let's say, we're going to invest X amount in the county with our business, and what guarantee are we giving them? All I hear is, we are asking, I don't hear anything of where we're giving, so that's why I put that out there, Mr. Mauer.
So the other thing to consider with the development agreement is, by state law, you're required to have an annual review of it and a compliance report, so the annual review is still required. Again, this is a policy call by the board, and it's up to your decision of whether or not you think this is something that we should consider.
And questions, annual review, Supervisor Mills?
Annual review, yes, with the potential, as you do with cars, of, you know, going through a carb check if necessary, something that might be looked at. Depends on just how good everybody is doing with compliance, but I think the board should be able to look at the possibility of having an annual review or a site review as part of an annual inspection.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm going to forego commenting on development agreements right now, and there's other counties, I am for an annual review, but a review and a permit don't, aren't necessarily the same. So, like, for example, Lake County issues a 10-year use permit subject to annual inspection and renewal. And I think a consideration in with that, so that, you know, we aren't going through the full process, but we're just checking the carb to make sure it's clean for the rest of the year, you know?
And the thing to consider, this is different than under the urgency ordinance, where the approval, the authority to operate your farm was temporary. Once a permit is issued, it is an entitlement that if the code changes, and we, you know, changes, those would be able to continue on as a legal non-conforming use.
Correct.
So just by the fact that a board changed the rules on them, they would be subject to the rules that are in place at the time that they applied for the application and got the original approval. So I foresee that the renewal process would be, are you still in compliance? And if not, then we would process a revocation, or work with them to bring them back into compliance, would be our. compliance would be our principal action, which would be what we do with any other business or use permit. If someone's out of compliance with the condition, we work with them to bring them back into compliance. And only if that doesn't work, sort of a last resort, we go towards revocation.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm, I'm in favor of renewal too. I, I own a business myself, and I have fire inspection annually, I have environmental health inspections annually, all of those I have to comply to. They come in and inspect, they look to make sure we're in compliance, all of our plans are there, escape routes, everything. Fire extinguishers are charged currently. That's just part of doing business, no matter where you do business. So I'm in favor of annually. It's just the way it's done everywhere.
Supervisor Toffenelli, a yes for annual renewal? Supervisor Stopper is a yes?
Well, the way, the way I explained it is yes, I am a yes for annual inspection and renewal. It's the permit that I, that I was discussing, which is separate from just a renewal.
Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, I started with annual inspection and review.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Pass.
So next thing was the transfer permits and the ability for someone who got a permit to then, you know, sell to someone else. I believe that we agreed or the board agreed that, you know, that's a possibility, but of course, anyone that, you know, acquired that and had to meet the same standards as anyone else, including background check.
Anybody want to change their position on that? Supervisor Mills?
No, it's kind of interesting too, because with a liquor license, you can sell to whoever, but whether a, the ABA wants you to hold that license as a holder of matter. So, you know, they're, they're gonna have to conform, whoever decides. It, it should be transferable.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Stopper, transferable?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Then we move to personal cultivation, and we'd suggested, and the board concurred, that the registration process for personal cultivation really wasn't working, that there didn't seem to be any real benefit for that. And you agreed that we're no longer going to require personal cultivators to, to register.
Question is, are we still, still on board for letting people not register?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Six plants, yes.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yes, as put in state regs.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, per state regs, Supervisor Stopper.
And so then we also, the, the ban only permitted indoor cultivation for personal cultivation, and the board had agreed that outdoor cultivation did be okay, but we wanted to have a setback established. There was some talk about, I think it was 150 yards or something like that, and that would limit where people could, could grow. I'm suggesting that if 75 feet is appropriate for commercial cultivation, then maybe 75 feet is appropriate for personal cultivation. We could also limit it by, by zones, or maybe zones we don't, you know, you don't want to see it. So I think that's another area of discussion that the board should have as far as, you know, where out, the personal outdoor cultivation should be allowed and what help, how great a setback would be necessary to protect the neighbors.
Supervisor Callaway?
Well, I look at it a little bit different, Mr. Mauer. I'm thinking, and I can only use areas within District 3. I live in Fieldstone, there are townhouses, and we have backyards. Why I can't have one plant? I mean, I can have six under state law, I understand that, but the county's gonna allow me to have one plant in my backyard, okay? I live in Meadowmont, and I have a third of an acre. Maybe I'm allowed to have three plants outdoors. Or I have two acres, and then I can have six plants outdoors. So I'm at, so we're saying, oh, they have to be indoors, and I have a studio apartment, I'm allowed to have six plants. I'm living in an apartment or condominium. I mean, I don't, instead of looking at the environment and where the plant is grown, look at, is it a condo apartment, the townhouses, a third of an acre, or what have you? I mean, I just think we need to look at it differently, because if you do 75 feet, that's gonna take out a lot of area, and I think they should be allowed to be grown outdoors. So we're just gonna limit it by the number of plants you could have. We're not saying you can't have six. We're just saying in Calaveras, if you live in Fieldstone, you can have one plant outdoors. Where you put the other five is up to you, indoor. Or if you live in Pine Brook and you have two acres, you can have all six of your plants outdoors. So it's just sort of another way of looking at it.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm sorry, you don't say? I think we go outdoors, we're gonna start rubbing, rubbing up against neighbors again and creating another problem, so I'm not in favor.
Supervisor Stopper?
State regs, along with the planning 75-foot setback.
Supervisor Toffenelli, where you at?
Not outdoors. Just gonna create too many problems, too many problems.
I'm gonna, I'm just, I really under, I understand that, because I have a neighbor who's growing and putting his six or four plants outdoors. And it's during, when they're in harvest, yeah, it stinks. But at the same time, I live in Fieldstone, or I live in a condo or an apartment, and I'm growing my six plants, it's still impacting my neighbors. So we're not going around checking every single residence in Calaveras County that is growing. They're allowed six plants for personal use. And so we know that people are putting their one or two plants outdoors. And then to say, well, they can't do it, what are we gonna do? Go tear up 2,000 houses that they're growing their plants outdoors? I guess I look at it, it's not realistic. I don't know how we can enforce it, including the plants that are grown in Fieldstone, the one plant in the back.
I am, I, I think Maria's got a very good point. And I'm not quite sure how to solve that one. But, same time, a lot of our complaints did, were neighbor issues, you know?
But were they personal or were they commercial?
It could have been, I don't know, could have been both. But, so, I don't know how to solve the problems you're speaking about, Maria. So I'll go with state regs and 75. Ben, had a statement?
Well, the, the, the setback would be it. You know, 75 feet from both lines, that's 150 feet. If you're doing, doing a needle in the middle of the property, that's 22,500 square feet, that's just over half an acre. So that's where we're at a point where half an acre, you're gonna have to go indoors if you're gonna do your personal six plants. You know, there's never gonna be perfect salt, there's always gonna be that neighbor that wants to tell everyone else they can't walk their dog to the edge of the property and let them go to the bathroom. But, you know, we, we do have mindful, because property, property rights are a double-edged blade, they cut both ways. We have to have respect for someone else's right to live without being impeded on the way they want to live. So the, it comes down to is, I, I believe that the indoor rule is overreaching and pushing people to do something that it, that even in the last board's own words was, creating a fire hazard. And they said, you all have to file for a permit because you're putting a fire hazard in your house that we're requiring you to put in your house. And none of these people filed for a permit. I mean, very few did. You know, I, I, I walked around during the election, I hit over 1,000 houses personally canvassing in Rancho Calaveras. And I'm telling you, there was a lot of people growing in their yard. You know, and I don't think the sheriff has the time to go out and check everyone's six plants, you know? I think, I think, I think we're being overhonest here. I think that 75 foot puts on half an acre, and I don't think really six plants on 100 square feet or less impedes on people's own lifestyles next door. So state regs, 75-foot setback.
Mr. Mauer, I have a question. That's 75 feet from where to where?
From the plants to the property.
So why not set, if the issue, why not 75 feet from the premise on the adjoining property to where I'm growing my plant?
Well, I think the issue here is the neighbors' enjoyment of their property. And if they've got an outdoor patio right up against the property line, you know, the idea is to separate the, the odors from the, from the plant to the adjacent property.
If the guy wants to mow his lawn on the edge of the forest, he can.
So, can a homeowner or an HOA restrict that people cannot grow a cannabis plant for their personal use?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Per, per state law, no. If state law says anybody's entitled to grow their six plants, we can only tell them they have to move them inside where they won't get a permit to.
The HOA can do that.
So, Julie?
State law says that, and I, I'm not gonna speak for agents, I don't, I don't know what HOAs can or can't do, because I don't represent HOAs. We can't prevent people from having six plants indoors. And to be honest, I haven't looked at the state law in terms of what happens if you choose to live in a subdivision that voluntarily imposes different rules upon itself. I don't know the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I want to address some of the issues that are being brought up by Maria and Mr. Stopper. First off, there's people that have, that are camping on their properties, there's people with junk on their properties, there's people with old cars piling up on their properties. Those are all violations, those are all code violations. Same way with the plants, we say they're indoors or growing in outdoors. We don't have code officers scouring everywhere, looking at everything. We get complaints, and then when we get the complaints from the neighbors, then we go out and investigate it. And that's no different than any other code violation or anything else, whether you're growing a plant outside and you're not supposed to, or you got piles of trash out on your property you're not supposed to. It, it, that's how it's dealt with here. We don't have a number of code officers to scour the county looking for violations continuously. It's on whether a next-door neighbor, or a neighbor down the street, or somebody that doesn't like you calls in and files a code complaint. That's how it's handled. So, you know, the issue about whether you walk for 2,000 people growing, they may be. Did you count any people who have cars piled up or, or so forth? I mean, it's, it's no different, in my opinion, so.
Supervisor Mills?
No, he explained it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, I don't see resolution yet on this one. Do we have three votes out state? Supervisor Stopper and I suggested state regs, 75 feet outdoors, okay. Am I reflecting that correctly? Supervisor Stopper? All right. Supervisor Callaway is not there yet, not there. Supervisor Toffenelli, no? Supervisor Mills, no?
So if we, if the three of us say no, what is it that we're saying?
We don't know what you're writing.
That's right. We don't know what to write.
Staff would like the board to keep talking.
So, all right.
That's not true. If, then, then the direction would be what we have right now is ordinance.
Six plants indoors.
That, that, it would, it would stand.
Six plants indoors is what it would be.
Oh, well, if that's my option, then I'll go with 75 feet and outdoors.
Thanks.
Say state regs, Maria.
Excellent.
State regs.
All right, we've now accomplished what we figured out last time. Move forward.
All right, so, yes.
This is getting long for everybody, a lot of thoughts, stick with us.
And we discussed this to some degree already, and decided to do with discretionary permit. I think we've come to the conclusion that conditional use permit is appropriate. Was there any further discussion on item 14?
Second?
Any further discussion on item 14? Our recommendation was that we don't look down the use permit process, we decided that's appropriate in the, in between parcels, the 10 to 20 acre parcels. And then, someone who wants to rezone their property, that's also an option. Was there any further discussion on this issue?
I, I think it's all addressed in number three.
Supervisor Mills?
I see it addressed in number 2C, in the ORR.
Okay. Anybody else have concerns or feel we haven't addressed those issues?
So then we move to co-location. There was a decision to allow for co-location, we need to sort of iron that out a little bit more as to what's the minimum parcel size, how many sites, and do you want to have a cap on the number of co-located premises?
Supervisor Mills, you want to start?
No.
Your light was on. Supervisor Stopper?
Around the state, other jurisdictions are recommending a minimum of 40 acres for co-location. Other than this, the scale recommended is, is agreeable. I think, I think starting them to, at 20 is too small, and we'll start in peating. It will be, it would be hard to fit what we're doing on 20 acres. I think we should move it up, and the scale, and I think there's a maximum set forth by the state, to some end, I'm not totally sure or recall exactly what I read, it's been a while, but, but it may be somewhere in the vicinity of four per hundred. I'm not, but I'm, I could be, I could be mistaken again, so, you know, but that's something to consider as we're writing for, we don't want to.
Mr. Mauer, under the, under the rule, under the direction we just gave prior, minimum acre of 20, so any co-location would have a minimum of 40.
Correct.
So we might have already gotten ourselves there. Am I doing that right?
Yeah, that's, that's the way I would, I would see that, that, so if you had, it's basically one cult, one premises per the acreage allotted for cultivation. So if you had 20 acres, you could do one, 40 acres, two, 60, three, et cetera. And that's, seems reasonable, then the question then would be whether or not you want to cap it. Is it five, is it something else?
Supervisor Stopper, your light's still on, what do you think?
Well, here, here it says 20, two premises on 20 acres, three on 30.
Well, that was based on the 10-acre minimum parcel size from previously.
Okay, that's what, that's why I brought four, 40, to start. I, I, I think at some point, you know, every so many acres, I, I'm not sure if the state or if you're able to find anything on it has, has a cap.
I'm not aware of any state law cap on co-location.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll pass it on for someone for further discussion as of right now.
Supervisor Callaway?
I support Stapp's recommendation.
Supervisor Mills?
As a policy matter, we can, we can put a limit on it, we don't have to be held to whatever is open-ended here. So if we say five, or, you know, that gives the sheriff and our code enforcement people and everybody else a chance, if there are co-located properties, to look at it once rather than look at multiples, so it might help to some degree, but I think. So it might help to some degree, but I think when you get into larger than five, it's going to create another, a whole other dynamic. So, I'm picking five.
Supervisor Stopper?
What does that apply to? Because if you say five, if someone owns seven hundred acres, is that five for every hundred acres, or is that five for one?
For total. And that's...
For a total, for, it doesn't matter if the land's seven hundred acres or two hundred acres.
It says graduated scale.
I cannot, then I cannot agree with that. I would suggest that we do a cap per hundred acres and go with that. Because if someone chooses to buy seven hundred, eight hundred, a thousand acres, they could put as much grapes on it as they want. But, you know, the cap should not be there except for per hundred acres.
Are we talking about a continuous piece of property? Are we talking about a parcel?
Continuous.
Parcel.
Parcel.
Because if you've got, you know, and how are we going to break that up? So let's say I've got a hundred-acre piece, two hundred acres pieces next to each other. Count them as two hundred or as a one hundred acre parcel?
Two separate parcels.
I would agree, but...
And we have a lot of those.
But if you have, if you've got a five hundred acre parcel, you know, do I, do you get five different hundred acre allotments, or do we cap it? I guess that's your question.
That's the policy call. Do you want to put a cap on it? You know, if it's unlimited, then if you had a thousand acres, you know, do the math, that would be a hundred premises.
Oh, we have a moratorium.
So the question is, okay. So, you know, if that person with a three hundred acre parcel, are they going to be capped at five? Or a hundred acre parcel for this case? Is that right?
Right. So anything over a hundred would still be five?
I would like it per a hundred acres.
Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, I would say it's capped at five. That's staff's recommendations here is five.
I mean, I think per parcel, I think you've got to cap it. Otherwise you're going to end up, some of these big parcels could end up with twenty acres under cultivation or more.
That's right.
And then you're dealing with a real, it's just a big impact.
Thank you.
I'm with five continuous parcel, five on any continuous.
On a parcel. So if you've got a hundred acres, you can have five.
I would agree.
All right. There's three.
And then the next question associated with that is, are there any limitations on the zoning for a co-location? Do it the same as for a single premise, or do you want to limit it to the more direct agricultural resource zones?
I'd like to see this stay in AG and GP. A1, Silver Co-location, AG and A1 AP and GP.
I would agree with that.
Supervisor Stopper, where are you at?
With a lot of the U's switching over to either A or GP or, you know, and so on in the future, I would like to add U to that, especially with the forty acre minimum being there already.
So, would we be excluding RA from co-location? Is that what you're thinking? Supervisor Stopper?
As of right now, yes.
Supervisor Callaway?
I'm going to include unclassified and RA.
I'm going to come in and include, I'm sorry.
I was just going to put hundred acres for unclassified and hundred acres, which it would be for RA.
I'm going to come in saying the zones that were allowed minus RA for co-location. I think RA starts getting into...
Another zone.
So what about U?
U included. So U can have co-location, what's the last year?
So the A1, AP, GF, and U for co-locations, but not RA.
Yes.
We need three votes for that?
Yeah. Everybody on? Gary, Penn, Tennis?
Yeah.
Marita? Wow, five votes. Is that the first one today?
I don't think so. It's impressive.
It's a win. We're going to celebrate it.
What, do I get a cookie now?
When we get five over and they're like...
Okay, so then moving on to indoor cultivation, under the urgency ordinance, it was permitted in the industrial zones, all three industrial zones. Mix and match, choose all three, it's up to you.
Supervisor Callaway?
If I have an RA, or I have an A1 property, and I want, and I can do a multiple premise, why can't I pick and have to say, I want to do an indoor grow on my acreage in addition to maybe an outdoor grow? Or I just want to do an indoor grow on my, excuse me, my twenty acres? I mean, if we're restricting it to just the M1...
That actually gets to question number eighteen. So we're looking at sort of the industrial use under the urgency ordinance, but we also, as I indicated in my report, there were some agricultural zones that also had an indoor cultivation component to their operation. And so that would...
So seventeen B would address that?
So what I'm looking at right now is just, you know, do we want to allow it in the industrial zones? If so, which zones? And then do we want to establish what limit would we have for indoor cultivation on industrial zones? And then the next question would be, do we want to allow indoor cultivation as part of...
Oh, okay. My apologies. Okay, I know, yes.
All right. Are there any indoor zones here, Mr. Bauer, that would be more appropriate?
I think the three industrial zones that we allowed under the urgency ordinance is appropriate, in my opinion.
If we added commercial, it'd be on the streets.
No, I don't want to...
Let me ask a quick question. Supervisor Callaway, you're saying yes to the staff recommendation?
For all three.
Which is up to ten thousand for all three?
It's just, for seventeen A.
Seventeen A is three.
I'm saying for all three.
Yes.
All three.
Supervisor Mills?
All three.
All three.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
All three.
Five. All right. It's our second one.
All right, and then what size? Under the urgency ordinance, it was five thousand square feet. I believe that the licenses that are being permitted by the state can go up to ten thousand per acre.
Mr. Bauer, I thought I read in the staff report that it said ten thousand.
It says...
Under seventeen B...
That's state, yeah.
It says staff recommends, et cetera, et cetera. The maximum was up to ten thousand, a small indoor state. Staff recommends that this limitation be retained. Last sentence.
Highlighted the wrong section there.
Ah-ha. So are you saying ten thousand, or are you saying...
If that's what we had under urgency ordinance, I would say yes, we might as well keep that. I don't know that we had any complaints associated with indoor cultivation on industrial sites, and so it didn't seem to be as big of an issue as we had with the outdoor cultivation. So I would recommend that we go with that.
You recommend ten?
Ten.
Okay, yes.
Did we have any ten thousand at the time?
It's a lot of building. That's a lot of building.
But it's not...
I don't recall anybody actually hitting that number.
The retainment of power to be able to facilitate that right now is a whole other hurdle. So, I mean, you can say, yeah, go ahead, go for your ten. Whether someone's going to be able to be able to attain three phases and get that to their property is going to be a whole other issue, so shoot for it.
Supervisor Mills, where are you at?
If they can do it, if they can get it done in ten thousand.
All right. Supervisor Stopper?
Ten thousand.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Ten thousand.
Damn. Five.
One of us is going to throw you a curve here, pretty soon.
I expect a curve any minute. I know, we're on the estimate.
Okay, so then we move back to the issue that Supervisor Callaway brought up as far as the ability to do indoor cultivation on non-industrial zone where we allow outdoor cultivation.
Supervisor Callaway, you want to state your position again?
I'd like to, I'd like to add RA.
Well, it'd be the same. The recommendation right now is that you allow it on the same zones, you allow outdoor cultivation.
Oh. Can I sneak an RR on this one? It's going to be indoor.
That's up to your calling.
Enforced meadows only.
I agree.
Thank you, Gary.
Comment of the day.
Yeah, you're behind a curve, too.
Supervisor Mills, where are you at?
Same as outdoor. No RA, no RR. But I don't know if we need to add U in there because that wasn't...
Should I say you were...
We were going to add U.
...in the cultivation on those ag properties?
Yeah.
On everything that we approved before.
Supervisor Stopper?
I agree with everything we approved before. It has less of an impact on neighbors if it's indoors, and to be able to facilitate the power, that's a whole other issue in itself, so good luck.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, and the ag's fine.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of putting buildings all over the place, but I think Supervisor Stopper's got a good point. It's a hell of a hurdle to get over.
It is, but we would allow barns on any other ag property, so...
There we go again. Five.
Just to clarify, that was on just the ag zones, or on basically the same as you're allowing for outdoor cultivation?
Well, we said, hang on a second.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
So then the next issue is regarding sensitive uses, and the state has identified what they have as sensitive uses, schools, daycare, youth centers. Other, there could be other sensitive uses, and there's been discussion in the past as far as bus stops and churches and parks. We would need to clearly define them in the code, but I think that parks might be something that where children would congregate and they might be concerned about having cultivation, outdoor cultivation that close. So that's a policy call for you, turning back to you guys.
I mean, it's not the kids that are grousing about the smell of cannabis, it's the adults. So maybe we don't want it next to shopping centers or wherever adults go. I'm fine with adding parks and as staff recommended, and that's all.
One of the big grubs in my district was bus stops, and they don't move, I mean, year over year, they're generally in the same location to the point where I have now have signs installed before and after bus stops, so. And it wasn't the parents that were grousing about, believe it or not, it was the kids. So I would like to see the bus stops in there, along with the parks.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Supervisor Mills. I had complaints about bus stops, first in the road, other areas, petting deer.
And the next question would be the distance. Supervisor Stopper, where are you at?
I'm in agreement with their recommendation as it sits with public parks.
I concur. Without parks. The question, the next question is the distance? Is there a question?
Well, wait a minute, the bus stops?
No. Bus stops, no. Supervisor Stopper, bus stops? Toffenelli, you, Supervisor Toffenelli, you were for bus stops. Three, two.
And then the other next question is the distance. Six hundred is the state standard. A thousand feet under the urgency ordinance, you also have a thousand feet separation under the dispensary ordinance.
I'm on state standard. The more we can go with the state, the easier it is for everyone.
Well, since we're already at a thousand feet for seventeen point nine one, this would keep a uniform standard throughout the county for it, so I would stay at the thousand feet.
Supervisor Stopper?
I'm fine with the thousand feet. I mean, no one should be within that now, so...
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm good with a thousand feet.
I am too. Four, one.
Okay, then the next question related to that is, where do you measure it from? Is it measured from the property line, or do you measure it from the premises?
From the premise.
And if it's co-location, we measure it from all of the premises.
Who's premise? Who's premises?
The cultivator is responsible to ensure that they are a thousand feet away from a sensitive use. And so they would need to locate their premise a thousand feet away from that use.
As long as we maintain that before, that's the standard, it's already been basically set. Why would we change it?
Well, the difference is between whether it's from the property line or the premise. The previous requirement was from the property line.
And I, my suggestion is, don't make it good one way in one ordinance, and then make it different in another one.
We need to fix the UO.
They don't have a UO.
I know. But if you said the UO wasn't good in the past...
I'm talking about seventeen nine one, sir.
Okay.
Supervisor Mills, you want to go from the property line? Anybody else want to weigh in? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Well, when you're talking about schools, another thing, you have to, it's not from the premise of the school, it's from the property, the state property, going to where the actual activity is going on. So I think it has to go from the property line.
It's not that the sensitive use has to locate away from, it's where the cultivation site is located, so it's measured in that direction, not where...
Supervisor Stopper? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, I think Mr. Bauer and his man wrong is saying that it would be...
You can correct her, she's so, she's not supervisor.
So, that we would be looking at the premise, the licensed premises boundary. So if there was a co-located property with three grows on it, it would be the exterior boundary of any licensed premises to the property of which a sensitive use is located.
Right.
And I'm good with that.
That's the way I understand it.
Yes.
I concur. So Supervisor Toffenelli, so I'm clear, from property line. Supervisor Stopper, property line, am I correct?
Oh, we just discussed premises.
Premises to property line.
This is what we're going to clarify.
So it's measured from the cultivation area, the premises, to the side plan, to the property line of the sensitive use.
Correct.
Or just a side to the bus stop.
When I first heard it, I heard it backwards also, but this is...
So you're good with property line?
No. Premise, premise, okay. Toffenelli's property line, Stoppers premise.
Property line.
Mills' property line.
Premise.
Premise. I'm going with premise as well.
That's what you wanted, right, Gary? Okay. So we got four one?
We got four one.
Got four one?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
How'd that work?
Right. So then next would be the setback of the premises to the property line on the parcel that it's located. How big of a setback?
Did that work well under the UO?
Depends on your reported reference.
I would like to separate this out into two parts, because I think indoor cultivation has a different impact to the neighboring property as it would be to outdoor. I don't think there is an impact necessarily as much from an indoor cultivation unit as the smell and light should not be onerous from outside the building if they're doing it correctly. So I think a indoor cultivation site should not necessarily have any... So I think a indoor cultivation site should not necessarily have anywhere near the setbacks that outdoor cultivation site has. So that's, I think we should have two separate things on this.
I agree.
I agree. Supervisor Toffenelli? What do you think?
Okay.
I mean, just splitting it up, I think, was the question.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine. All right, so Peter, let's take on the first one, outdoor.
Okay. So again, it was seventy-five feet during the urgency ordinance. It seemed as reasonable as could get.
It got mixed reviews.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the options are any number between zero and infinity, I suppose.
So, outdoor. Staff is recommending seventy-five. Let's go in.
I'm fine with seven, I'm fine with seventy-five outdoor and thirty-five indoor.
So I think under the urgency ordinance in the industrial zones, it was whatever the structural setback was for the zone.
Okay, I'll take that.
It's going to vary, the zone, it's probably industrial, it's maybe in the range of ten, twenty feet.
I guess, I guess the structural setback would be the building it's contained in, so it wouldn't matter.
Supervisor, go ahead, please. Should we say in seventy-five, but in industrial zones, whatever the current code is for an industrial building?
So I guess, and then if you're indoor cultivation on an ag zone, do you want to maintain the seventy-five foot setback or do you want to modify that?
No different.
Yeah, I think we should, we should maintain the setback on other, other properties, but when it comes to manufacturing, we'll...
An industrial zone.
An industrial zone, I'm sorry.
I don't support that. If whatever might be a setback if you're going to build, as Gary mentioned, you can build a barn on your property or a tulip shed or whatever it is you want, then, and it's an indoor grow, and we've already said indoor grows have a minimal impact compared to an outdoor grow. I, and you want to put a building out for an indoor grow on your A1 property, then I don't think it needs to be a seventy-five foot setback.
The typical setback for those larger agricultural zones is thirty feet.
I support thirty feet. For an indoor grow, for an indoor grow on...
Anything.
Outdoor, yeah, non-commercial.
I think, I guess the way to put it would be for every zone that indoor growing is being allowed, it would be the setbacks that the buildings would have to be set back from the property line, would be the way I would introduce it into it, but that's just my opinion. And then we can debate outdoor.
So you want, your suggestion, we break this down. So let's break this down. Industrial indoor setbacks, Supervisor Stoppers is saying is thirty feet or what the code currently stands.
What the code says for the building that it would reside within.
Okay, I agree with that. Supervisor Toffenelli, you want to weigh in or?
On that issue?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Supervisor Mills?
I'm good.
Just another five oh. Outdoor. This is where we had that rub ball again, that seventy-five feet in some cases wasn't enough and it did create some conflict, so.
I wouldn't be in favor of seventy-five feet again. I think it created a lot of conflicts between neighbors. I would like to see it at least increased to at least a minimum one hundred and fifty feet.
It's not something we couldn't revisit later.
I mean, we're talking twenty acres minimum on the minimum parcel sizes here in some of these.
Supervisor Callaway?
I not, I don't want to go towards revisiting things later. This is difficult enough as it is. You know, there's a huge difference between seventy-five feet and one hundred and fifty feet. Staff's recommending seventy-five for the setback on an outdoor grow on a legally approved zone, minimum twenty acre parcel. So I support the seventy-five feet.
Supervisor Stopper?
We're up to twenty acres.
Light? Right. Light?
Sorry. We're up to twenty acres. I'm thinking pushing it back more would help mitigate some of the issues. I think there's other considerations to take in, take in to, to take in throughout here. I would be fine with seventy-five feet, but I think there's more to it than just seventy-five feet.
I've just, I'm at one fifty only because of the, some of the difficulties that we've ran into, even in the denial phase, as they were coming to us at the board, that number kept cropping up, that seventy-five kept cropping up.
Sorry, I'm just doing some math.
No, it's okay. Take your time.
So maybe I can weigh in. The reason why we recommend that we stick with the seventy-five feet, if the purpose is to allow those cultivators who were previously registered and they were at seventy-five feet, if we changed it to a higher number, that might preclude their ability to get a provisional license because they would have to relocate the premises from where they were at before. That, not a judgment call, that's just a...
I'm okay with a seventy-five feet.
I'm not trying to advocate for that, I just want to let you know that that was why we selected that number was to convert, was to allow those who were previously registered to meet current...
Seventy-five.
Yeah, seventy-five.
You got three votes? Three. Callaway, Stopper, Gary.
There is, I guess, one way we could, you know, if you were concerned about that distance, and Julie may kick me on this one, whether we have a standard for a new cultivation site that's greater than that. So if you qualify under the immediate provisions of, you know, re-permitting the existing cultivation site, but if you're relocating to a new, a new site or something else, then a greater setback could be an option.
Mr. Mauer, I'm not going to kick you, I'm going to buy you a lunch because that, that would be an answer, to push the new sites out to the hundred and fifty. Is there any interest on part of the board revisiting or are we still good where we're at?
I would support that.
Well, the, of the three that put it, allowed a seventy-five, does anybody want to change their vote? Stay where you are.
Seventy-five feet?
I mean, unless, we can bring it back up. Feel good? Supervisor Stopper?
He's the swing vote here.
You know, it's the, please don't call it that. The future properties is something that needs to be continued in discussion. Let's stick with seventy-five feet for now. This still has to go through the planning commission, then it comes back to the board. If there's anything enlightening, we can make that change later.
Thank you. We're going to take a break at three o'clock, so let's see if we get one more question done.
So fencing.
Whoa, 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 I want to make sure. Indoor grow.
Meets the zoning setback regardless of the zone. So if it's industrial zone, you've got a fairly small setback. If you're in an ag zone, you've got whatever the ag zone is, I believe it's thirty feet for indoor.
Okay, I just, all right, thank you.
So under the fencing requirement, we had a solid fence that was intended to provide screening of the plants. Due to the topography, that didn't always provide screening and in some cases we felt that sometime the fencing was more of an eyesore than the plants. There are no state requirements for fencing. It's totally up to the cultivator to provide their own, you know, security. I would suspect that most cultivators here are want to have fencing to keep animals out if nothing else, maybe two-legged as well as four-legged. But the options are, you know, we don't require any and let the cultivator decide how they want to secure their crop. We require something that's, you know, a chain link or field fencing to provide security for trespassing or we try to screen it again with some type of solid fencing.
I'd like to hear from the sheriff on this one. I want to, I want to weigh in real quick and so far as, you know, that was the one thing I really did not like about the urgency ordinance is it just blighted everything when we tried, we thought it was a good idea, but in hindsight, I think you guys nailed it, and it just didn't work.
Because the black visqueen was all over the place.
There's garage doors up around one near Rancho.
It's just blight. Sheriff, I'm sorry.
It's okay, you're the chair, you can talk all you want.
Supervisor Mills asked you out.
What would you, what would you like to say?
The concern for the sheriff's office is not only for the growers having trespassers coming and stealing their crops, my concern is kids going in, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but there's a potential for kids to go in and steal marijuana. That's the biggest issue that I see. I don't, we had an issue, we're back in two thousand and fifteen, we had a triple homicide because people came into a crop and they were able to sneak into it from the backside and steal a bunch of marijuana. It's an issue. I don't know, you're talking about a half an acre property. I understand that when you drive over, it doesn't stop the view of the marijuana and again, my concern isn't stopping the view of seeing the marijuana, my concern is the control of keeping the marijuana inside of the fencing. One of the things that we had in the UO was that they had to have some type of secured fencing and you're right, people were putting up the plastic and we were having people take a pocket knife and cut through the plastic, go and steal the marijuana. That, that's, it's an issue. If you, you're going to have a commodity now that is going to be legal in the county, now we're going to be taking theft reports for marijuana being stolen. So if you don't have a way to secure it, Sender's Market has fencing around their property. You've got fencing around your property to protect your items inside of your fencing, inside of your, on your property. So fencing for me is golden. If you can secure the property or just the grow, that's good for us. Again, you folks have that decision to make on whether you want to implement that upon these folks. For us, anytime you have a secured area, it makes our job easier.
The reason for the question was I don't want to make a chain link fencing company rich, you know, if, if, as long as the statement is, is that it be secured from children. If that's the ultimate goal, what type of fencing it is should be left up to the individual.
And I agree. Again, I'm not so much concerned about what type of fencing, just something that makes it secure. Honestly, if it was me, I would love to have all indoor grows because now it's all secure.
True.
But, but that's not an option. So if there's a way for you folks to implement some type of security to make our jobs easier and protect their property, that, again, that's on you folks.
I don't, again, I don't want to specify the type of fencing. I am more interested in ensuring that the needs are met from the sheriff's department.
I would like to see the property, the grow itself secured.
Yes.
Supervisor Stopper?
I just want to say I agree with what Rick's saying and in number twenty-three, I agree with what they've recommendation here with one clarification or similar means metal fencing.
Means metal.
When you say metal, you're talking about cyclone fencing?
Well, no, because metal fencing could be your, your basic horse fencing or, or other, other fencing, you know? So there's multiple metal fencing. To be your cyclone fencing, I mean, metals, you know, somewhat, either way, I can show up to, to A grow, whether it's cyclone or not, with a pair of bolt cutters and I can get through any fence I want to.
And you can climb over it too.
It's a deterrent. And so let's make it metal and, or just the clarification here, or similar means metal fencing.
As long as it's secure, if you guys are happy with it, I'll be happy with it.
Well, I think the person that wants to be happy with it is the person that's cultivating. So my recommendation, it could be a wood fence. You can have wood fences that look nice, I mean, or for whatever, it's not up to us to say. Or field fencing, as I thought I heard Jack say. And if you go down to item twenty-six, which is security cameras, the state requires security cameras, so that's a non-starter. So whether it's a fence that keeps a deer out or whether it is a fence that keeps a neighbor out, and of course it's always kids that can go in front of Bret Hart High School and buy it, why do they want to go steal it? I, you know, and they have to have a fence and I just, I think, it is, the area looked terrible the way it was before. So my recommendation, it could be metal, it could be wood, it could be a field fence. I mean, they have to have a gate, if I read the rules correctly, and they're going to have to have cameras. So if the issue is who's stealing, whether it's a neighbor kid or somebody from Fresno, it doesn't matter. So.
I just came to answer Dennis's question, yes, I like seeing some fencing. That's all.
Oh, my gosh!
Goodness, I'm going. We're ready for a break, so.
All right, I recommend metal or wood, could be field fencing, we want to limit the eyesore, it was a terrible eyesore throughout the county, and if you jump to twenty-six of cameras, that's the key to security.
I'm not ready to jump. Supervisor Toffenelli, thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. I'm for a fence around it, I know we had some issues. Is the composition of the fence, I just put it to staff and say, is a fence required? Will they submit what their permit, what fence they're going to do and it's up to them to decide whether it's going to be adequate or not. If it's not adequate, they can tell him, you know, their options on what they can do.
Subject to interpretation.
He doesn't want that.
I know he doesn't want that, I can tell by the look on his face, but, but, you know, we can, we can say metal, we can say wood, we can say plastic fencing, the, the plastic fencing, the white stuff you see going around, there's all kinds of stuff that you can say, but is it going to be adequate for security? You know, you're the one that's going to have to be dealing with initiating the permits.
So I think we had some language from the planning commission draft recommended regulatory ordinance from what, a year and a half ago now, that I think is going along the line you're saying, we don't really want to dictate the materials that it's being made of as long as it provides some, some security. It's a, and, and yes, anyone can get through any fence if they want to with the right tool or good climbing skills, but to the degree that it serves as a deterrent, what we don't want to do is be judging aesthetics. That just gets us into discretion that we don't want to have to deal with. So as long as, and we can craft language that ensures, you know, some level of security for, you know, to prevent trespass. So if that's the direction you want to go, we've got some language.
That's the direction I would go.
That's the direction I would go.
Supervisor Mills?
Same here.
Supervisor Callaway?
Yes.
Yes, five oh, and we're on a ten minute break.
Take a break.
Mr. Mauer?
So the next item are generators and we're suggesting that the generators only be used in sort of an emergency purpose and, and I know that sometimes you've got, you know, your, I don't mean just, you know, a clear emergency, but, but the fact that, you know, your solar panels are down for some reason and you have backup power, but it's not to be the primary source of, of power is what I intend for that.
Do you want to begin or Supervisor Stopper?
Staff's recommendation is good, state, state, state requirements. Any, anybody with a backup generator knows, you know, if things go down, it's prudent to our household needing, needs or any other business, so yeah, that, you know, as a primary source, no, as a backup source, absolutely.
Well, not really, because it doesn't designate horsepower. And the state regs designate horsepower.
So the state would allow for that as a primary source of power if it's under, what is it, horsepower?
Under 50.
50 horsepower.
I'm for, I'm for emergency only.
And then, and then after 2023, it changes.
Supervisor, Supervisor Mills?
It's all right. Emergency only.
Supervisor Tapper, you said emergency only? I agree, emergency only. 4-1.
So what are you going to do about those people that are living on places where there is no power? Are you going to say, too bad? I mean, there are people who live off the grid.
That's fine, isn't it?
Yeah. That's, that's a policy problem. If they did not have some other power source, they would need to develop that.
Again, we're setting up our own rules where the state already has a rule. So are we now going to, yeah, I know we can. But the more we can do that follows with the state, then there isn't redundancy. That's less for staff to do, that we follow code, state code.
Okay. Next, next item.
That was a 4-1 vote.
It was a 4-1 vote.
Next issue is lighting. The state has standards. They need to be downward facing and shielded. One of the big issues that we face here was someone referred to as glow worms in the sky, I think, or the, you know, the big glow worms on the hillside. And I think that we need to not only rely on the state standard, but we would need to have the standards in our code. And I'm suggesting that we actually have greenhouses, hoop houses fully covered at night so that we don't have that kind of light pollution.
We wouldn't be the first county to do that. And adding to that point is, is that our new general plan update, how does the dark sky ordinance there fit within what we're trying to do here?
Well, and this would be consistent with dark skies type of provision.
Supervisor Tapper?
I'm sorry, were you done?
Staff's recommendation is agreeable. If someone's doing their own cultivation, they do light depth during the year, they'd be able to drag something over if they have lights in it during the night at the same time.
Rita, we spend a lot of time on dark sky ordinances.
Yeah, I am a big proponent of a dark sky ordinance.
And I'm in favor of the staff's recommendations.
As am I.
I concur. I think that I really do want that ordinance to come out to clean, to make sure we can enforce this. That was one of my number one complaints, was, was that issue. And it's easily fixable. So that's four. Rita, where were you?
Yes.
Five.
That was a hard one, wasn't it?
Peter?
So next issue is security requirements. That's, my reading of the state law says that they are required to identify what their security requirements are, but there are no specific standards of what is required in the state law. We certainly, fencing is something we talked about. We want to make sure it's locked. And so the other issue that the sheriff has brought up is requiring security cameras. So those are the options that we've identified.
Doesn't the state regulations require security cameras?
They, to my knowledge, my reading of the code, it doesn't require it. It requires them to, requires the grower to tell the state what their security protocols are, what, what systems they have in place. And.
Yeah, that's correct. It just says it provides a detailed security protocol. The word camera actually doesn't appear at all in the CDFA regulations anywhere for, for cultivation.
So when we talk again about security requirements, are we saying that we're going to adopt the state, what the state's saying?
No, because there are, there are no standards. They're requiring the grower to submit to the state what they are proposing as far as security. But there are no specific standards that says you must have at a minimum these things. This is something that the sheriff may want to weigh in on, but we're suggesting that we have at least a minimum of, you know, the fencing and that it be locked. And security cameras is also something that the sheriff has recommended.
So we're going to lock a facility that somebody can climb over the fence on?
Well, it's a deterrent. Like, you know, Mr. Tapper said, you, you can't prevent anyone with the good, big enough bolt cutters or, you know, climbing ladder, whatever, from entering. You know, people can break into almost anything. But at least you have minimum deterrents. That's what we can expect. If there are cameras, at least it provides some assistance to law enforcement for capturing people or ensuring that someone's not pulling a fast one. And oh, yeah, my crop was stolen when actually it was shipped to Nevada.
Mr. Mauer, we say lock facilities. A facility to me is a structure, but in this case, you're saying it could also be the outdoor grow?
Yes. So it would be the premises.
So it's the premise.
What we don't want is someone just be able to walk on in. You know, if they're going to break in, they're going to break in. There's nothing we can do to stop that. But we certainly don't want people to just be able to walk up, open a door or a gate and just have access to it.
So you have fencing, like field fencing and a gate. What in the heck good is a gate if you have field fencing? Or you have the fencing you see around a vineyard, which is pretty much to keep the deer out. Now I have a gate, what am I locking up? I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm trying to put as much of this on state regs so we're not running out all the time. And we're trying to set up a security system that maybe the sheriff might like. But we're not, and now we're out trying to regulate that. You know, the, the issue should be on the cultivator. You know, they don't want their almond crops stolen. They don't want their cannabis plants stolen. And they don't want their vineyards. Right? So who are we to say, except that's a volatile product at the moment?
I'm not advocating for a position. I'm supplying, you know, this is a discussion that board members need to have.
I know, I know, I know. I apologize. I do apologize. I just, I have a problem. I got to let my colleagues talk. I've got to conch and date on this.
Supervisor, Supervisor Mills, your light is on.
It's interesting. I remember under Sheriff Macedo talking about the securities issue too, but I don't think that we want to go down the road of requiring the sheriff's department to approve every security system that might come along. There's a lot of new technology out there. It could be done very easily, including motion sensor. I mean, anybody's got a Ring doorbell understands what this is all about. So I would go with staff recommendations at this point.
Supervisor Tapper?
I think these people want to protect their product as, as much as Rita brought up, that there's a fact that they, they do want to protect it. I think that a majority of the staff's recommendation is kind of open-ended here because it just says what type of cameras, how, they're required to provide the state with their security plan. We already set these gates and these fence earlier on farther up. So that's already a requirement. I think when they submit, we should require them to submit their security plan to us, the same as they submit it to the state. And I think it's in their best interest to provide themselves with the best security plan that they can.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I'm going with staff recommendations. They've gone through the whole urgency ordinance and everything, and they have the experience. They know what worked and didn't work. So I'm going to go with staff recommendations.
Supervisor Mills, your staff recommendations?
Correct.
Supervisor Calloway, where, where are you landing on this?
What are we protecting? Are we trying to protect their crop? I'm not trying to protect their crop. That's up to them to protect their crop. If somebody comes in and takes their plants, that's up to them to call the sheriff's office and say, somebody took my plants. I would rather we go with what the state is and let them submit what they think is in their best interest to protect their crop. The same as I pick the kind of lock I want on my front door. That's my choice. I don't see why we're out trying to tell them how to protect their crop.
Supervisor Tapper? So you're, you're going with state regs? Am I correct?
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Tapper?
The, the state regs, but I would like to include that they submit, they submit their security plan to our, to whoever, the planning department or the sheriff at the same time, that they, that they submit it to the state so that they're, the sheriff's aware when they go on the property, what they have to deal with in case they do call and say, hey, I'm getting robbed. Come out, you know. They know where the bear trap is.
I just want to clarify, the state, there are no state regs when it comes to security. The only state reg is submit a security plan.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
I just wanted to make sure.
I will, I will join you two in state regs. So three, two, Mills and Toffenelli, no.
So just basically submit a little of their security plan. So the next issue is fire safety. The state requirement is, requires that all indoor cultivation, they notify the local fire, fire district. We're suggesting just for informational purposes, that they also notify for outdoor cultivation as well.
Well, former fireperson, I would agree. Outdoor needs to be looked at. Not that there's going to be anything there, but it will also give them an opportunity to put together a fire plan. If they know the site, they're familiar with where things are located, what's stored in buildings. All of that is a key component to rapid response. So outdoor plus indoor.
Do you support the staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I support staff recommendations. I think that's something that needs to be done. I do it in my business. Like I said, I'm inspected yearly fire. We're, we're looked at. They're aware of everything I have. They're notified. They know we exist. I don't see anything wrong with that. It gives the fire departments the opportunity to know, like Dennis pointed out. I'm, I'm required to have a site plan and location of fire hazard things in my shop and where they're located, as far as cylinders, paints, solvents, what have you. That all has to be on a map annually, annually, when the fire department comes out to inspect. So I don't see any difference in any other business.
Supervisor Tapper?
Just rereading it a couple of times. I think, I think staff's recommendation is good. It's required by the state for indoor grows. The only thing you're adding is what if outdoor, if it's outdoor or mixed light, also be a notification of fire districts. I think that's us being part of a strong community and working together. You know, you want the fire department to know what they're walking into if you have a fire on your property. So, and then the hazardous material thing, you already nailed it under COOPA program and everything else. I, staff recommendation is good to me.
Supervisor Calloway?
Do we do this, require this for all other ag products when my winery goes in?
The state doesn't.
Do we?
Not, well, we don't require a special permit for other ag operations. Now, obviously, if someone's building, new, new building, the fire department has to sign off on that.
Right.
But as far as just someone cultivating grapes, no.
If it is just a notification that I'm going to have a cannabis site here, that's all, that's all I would support. I mean, if I want to put in my winery, you don't, we, they, whatever the pronoun is, does not require anything more than that, if that at all. So when we say notification to local fire departments, when it says for all cultivation licenses, I'm not clear what that is.
So that would include not just the indoor cultivation, which is the minimum which is required by state law, but it would include outdoor and mixed light.
Okay. Okay. I'll support that.
I support that as well. So you got five with staff recommendation.
Yeah. Excuse me. 27B. 27B has to do with the regulation that has, hazardous materials and pesticides. Now, the state basically occupies a field on pesticide regulation. We cannot impose any additional standards on pesticides. And, but we could come up with new standards regarding hazardous materials. Working with Environmental Management Agency, we feel that the current standards we have in place under the COOPA program and other regulations that there are sufficient.
I support that.
You support relying on existing regulations and programs?
I support that also.
Supervisor Toffenelli, yes. Supervisor Tapper?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
And I don't. And the reason is, is because there's a lot of thresholds that are out there right now, which our environmental health office is relying on the state's thresholds in terms of cleanup. And it's one of the problems that we have in this county is because a single location doesn't meet the state threshold, and I'll go back to those retained cylinders at our high school here, we don't get a local cleanup response. And it puts us in a precarious position. So my answer is no. It needs new requirements.
My, my answer is yes. 4-1. Mills, no. 28.
Okay. Background check. So I think this is one we'll probably have lengthy discussion on. We have, state has a background check requirement. We can require a separate process locally. And then I think we need to make sure that if we do establish a local process, it's a very clear ministerial type process with an ability to, you know, an appeal process that does not go through my office, that's handled by sheriff's department and whatever kind of appeal process they would have to if it were a hearing officer.
Can we ask the sheriff to come up?
I think sheriff would be very appropriate.
I'm doing okay. How you doing?
I've been feeling good. I had lunch. Happy. We, the sheriff's office got ahold of the federal DOJ, Department of Justice. And as you remember, we talked about this quite a bit extensively, that there is a, what we call a triple I background check, which allows us, being the sheriff's office, to check anybody that is going to be into this program on a federal level. The way it stands right now is we can only check them state level, which is basically for an employment. So the problem we were having was that we could have somebody from out of state who was a convicted felon that was able to come to Calaveras County and have a marijuana grow. And, or any business in that matter. And we would not know that. The resolution that you folks passed last week, and the work that I did with the Federal Bureau of Investigation and DOJ, they're going to allow us to do those background checks. I've talked to numerous growers and they're all on board. They say, hey, we don't have a problem with you doing background checks because they want to have a legitimate business. I know Ms. Calloway and I have had. a legitimate business. I know Ms. Callaway and I have had some long-term discussions on why we should be doing a background check when the state is already doing it. And I tried to explain it to you before, that the state does not share their information with us. Her argument was that if the state is saying that this person can have a marijuana dispensary or be an owner of a marijuana business, that we shouldn't have to do that background. The problem is, is that they have to come to us to get their license to the county first, before they can go to the state. Is that not correct? Okay, so now, we should be able to do the background first, so that we know that this person that we're sending to the state is okay to have a marijuana license.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I support the sheriff. We've had conversations on this before, not even now, but back. We're having other discussions. And he's been very consistent, him and the undersheriff both, on these background checks and the necessity for them, so I'm fully supportive.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I have talked to Rick extensively, and I do agree with this. There is one thing I do wanna bring up, though. During the urgency ordinance, it may have been just because of the show numbers, there was a backlog on some of these background checks. So, you know, someone would be only hurting themselves if they were to enter the process and not have a good background and then fail. So, I would agree with this recommendation, but yet during the process of the background check, the owner has, most of these owners have already passed them to some degree. Whether they've done something bad in the last few years is another thing that is yet to be foreseen, but as having passed one in the past, may proceed pending approval from the background check, is the only thing that... 'cause I don't want the process to be backed up on 150, 100, 100. Who knows how many people end up filing? But I wouldn't want the process to be backed up on one issue. So, as you're processing, they may be able to proceed with providing their information to the plant, to the planning, and then if so on to the state, if you're still going through the process of doing these, and then they're only hurting themselves if something comes back and they fail later.
Absolutely. Because I can get that information now, and I'm still waiting to hear back from them, 'cause Maria and I had talked about this also, I need to, if we have somebody, Billy Bob here, that has already got his license, he's gone through the process through the UO, and we did his background, the problem is, the backgrounds that we did, again, were only at state level. So, they have to be resubmitted in order to do them at the federal level.
Yes.
Because it's a different process through the feds now.
And people have issues in other states that they may not have...
They may not have had here.
Came to light before.
Right.
I concur, and I do want to let, I do agree with your recommendation, sir. I just would like something instated in there, in the process of you processing these triple I's, they may proceed pending approval.
I don't have a problem with that, because what's gonna happen is if they fail that background check, then they've wasted everybody else's time along with their time and money.
And their money.
Absolutely. I don't have a problem with them moving forward in the process. And we will expedite as quickly as we can. We're getting staffed up now for this process. That was one of the reasons why we brought this resolution to you folks now, so that that step's already in place, so we can start moving forward with it now. Once you guys come up with some type of an ordinance, whenever you start that, we can actually start doing backgrounds on people prior to them getting their county license, whenever you guys decide to do that, if we have their permission to do that, and the board has approved that. We'll get that moving forward as quickly as possible. You gotta remember, we don't control how quickly we get those backgrounds back.
Yeah.
That comes from the feds and the state. So, we submit it. It's all done, as they all know, it's all done electronically. Put your fingerprint on the pad, and off it goes. That's it. So, it takes time for the state and the feds to get it back to us.
It only takes one to make that prolonged, so that's, I agree with you. I just would like it instated, they may proceed.
And I don't, again, don't have a problem with them moving forward with the process while their background packets are being, their backgrounds are being checked. That's not a problem.
Supervisor Mills?
I support, as long as we don't go back to the UO of who's gonna be the gatekeeper over the decision of whether or not someone's background check is determinate whether or not they get a...
Well, I think that's what Peter just talked about, that it's gonna fall back upon the sheriff's office.
That is my point.
And we don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I support.
I only have one question, Sheriff. I support your position on this. I'm just thinking pragmatically. You know, when you have, you know, there's your regular workers that you'd have on the farm, and then there's gonna be harvest, where you've got a bunch of bodies coming in for a relatively short period of time. My prediction is that eventually there's gonna be, UFCW's gonna have certified cannabis workers who've got the little badge. I'm guessing that at some point, just like in other agricultural industries, you end up with labor contractors who assume, put those packages together, and make sure they've got their labor organized. I mean, I'm gonna back you on this, but how are we gonna handle that situation in year one? Eventually, markets will make it more efficient over time.
Right, right.
I believe that. But initially, there's gonna be some starts and stops.
Well, again, you have an employer who's gonna be hiring somebody. Just like when we hire a deputy, we have to do a background check on them. If the employers wanna start that process and get him in here, or her in, to get the background check started, we can start that process, so that they know that they're hiring somebody that they can actually hire.
I guess I'm thinking, you know, when you've got, you need a lot of people, so you're gonna have people come in from out of the county. A labor contractor who's got a crew put together in Stanislaus County, and they're all certified and have their background checked there, could they come up here?
Absolutely.
Would that pass muster with the SO?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and, you know, same thing. I mean, UFCW's got a hiring hall here, and they've got that, but people are coming from other counties. That universal badge from Nevada County or Stanislaus County?
As long as they've been checked, I don't have a problem in recognizing. It's just like I recognize somebody else's CCW.
Okay.
So I don't have a problem with that.
Thank you. Those are my questions. So... I know I was putting onto you. Sorry, Supervisor Callaway, I'm sorry.
Yes. Better pick a good one.
All right. Couple of things. I do disagree with the sheriff. I think we have people that have already gone through the process. We've already said that they had to be going back to the very beginning, prior registration and good standing and a temporary state license. And now, we're going through that process again. They have to get, they have to be permitted by the state, and if the state says no, it doesn't matter what we say, it's a no. So, we're doing it, and I understand the sheriff saying, "Well, we're sending you state somebody good," but the state might find something that the sheriff might or might not. And so, it's a mute point. So, I think it's somewhat redundant for at least the first tier people. I mean, if you have somebody who's transferred their license, and we have a new person, again, that then starts the process. If I understood what, I just wanna make clear what Jack said. If some worker bees come in from another county, and they've already been vetted, then that will be accepted by our sheriff's office, correct?
In that aspect, yes. However, we have, and I don't know if they're gonna get to that or not, but we're, the sheriff's office is looking to have ID badges, just like what we're doing. They're still gonna have to apply for that ID badge, so that, again, when my deputies show up on site, we know who we're dealing with.
But if they got a badge in Stanislaus County, then they have to get another badge?
Yes, ma'am, that's for Stanislaus County.
Well, then, what Jack said doesn't apply.
No, the background part's a different story. They've been background there, and I can call down to Stanislaus. If they can tell me that they're clear, I'll sign off on them by Stanislaus saying that they've been cleared through their background process. I don't know if Stanislaus has that system up and running. I know Monterey County does. I know Placerville City does. I know there are few entities out there that do have it done. So, if they come from that, they've already had that background, because the DOJ has already approved those certain municipalities and counties to do that triple I background.
Maybe one of the, I was gonna say, so one of the things that might happen is, you know, during harvest season, when we know there'll be a bump in labor needs, people could bring in their cards from Monterey County or wherever they come from, or whatever the labor contract.
If they have that.
And bring them to you and say, "I wanna work in your county."
Absolutely. I don't have a problem with that. I wanna try and make it as seamless as we can, but we still need to know who we're dealing with when we get to the site. Now, if Monterey County happens to have an ID badge that just says Monterey County on it, and I'm not opposed to looking at that to see if it matches what we're doing and honor it. Again, I don't wanna double-do the horse. I just, I wanna make it so that when my guys show up, that they're safe on that site, and they know who they're dealing with. That's the key for us.
So, I now need to hire employees. I can hire them, and we're just talking cultivation, but it would be the same dispensaries. We hire them, and I can hire them. I can put them to work today pending approval of their background check.
They've still gotta get their ID card through us, and that's all done basically at the same time. When we send off their background checks, yes, they can.
I understand, but can I hire that person today and then have them go through the SO's process?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like that. No. What I'm saying is, I can hire today. I can put somebody on today. I take the risk today while the SO's office is doing their background and gives them their security card.
But you gotta remember, they gotta come to our office, they're gonna do that process, the fingerprints are gonna be sent off, they're gonna be issued an ID card.
Got it.
They're good to go.
But I'm still working them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can somebody, can somebody do their life scan in other locations besides Calaveras? You know, somebody comes in from Amador and they wanna do it in Jackson?
They won't allow that.
But they do it for an ABC license. I can, when I got my ABC license...
Right, we send that to the ABC. The problem is, you're not going to find, it's a government entity. You're not gonna be able to go to Amador County and say, "Hey, I wanna grow marijuana in Calaveras County," and do your background check there, and then have it sent to us.
But I don't mean the background check. I meant, I'm just gonna do the mechanics of doing a life scan. I mean, I can do it for a CCW. I could get it done in another county, can I, or in Stockton, even though you are issuing my CCW for Calaveras County?
Correct. They'll send it to us, but I still gotta go back to, they have to come to my office to do the, fill out their background packet to get their ID card, so why would they not just do it all right then and there?
I don't know why.
It doesn't make sense.
I just wanna...
How many people here by show hands wanna run to Amador County and get your fingerprints, and then come back to my office and do your paperwork?
One, I got one.
One, okay, well.
I bet.
Well, that's true.
I just wanted to clarify, I do, the sheriff is correct. I do have some...
Say that again, the sheriff?
Is correct, in that he and I have a disagreement on how we perceive this, but, you know, I've already lost the votes on that, so I can... But the other question is that when we put the application package together, if in that application practice, excuse me, package, it could be the requirements that the SO's office wants to, is that possible?
Certainly. We can have that as a part of the overall application packet for someone who applies to that. I just wanna make sure that I understand exactly what's going on and just, you know, a couple of the defined points. So, the sheriff will have its own background check process. It will apply to anyone, owners, operators, and employees of the site will need to have a background check. We've discussed having some type of ID card. I don't think that's necessarily a part of this ordinance. It'd probably be a separate ordinance we would take to establish this ID card process. It would be so transferable from one location to another. We can talk about that. The one thing I really wanna point out, though, is that, you know, with, as a ministerial type of permit, we need to have very clear standards. We'll need to work with the sheriff to establish what is a disqualifying conviction, you know, that you checked the box, you're convicted for this, you're disqualified. The use of discretion, you know, I understand, you know, none of it's black and white. There's a lot of gray. But we have to have it as clear and concise as possible. Otherwise, we're subject to some challenge as far as legitimacy of the ordinance and our ability to disqualify. We had a lot of concerns about this during the urgency ordinance, where, you know, people appealed their disqualification, and the planning commission, there was sort of left to be sort of the judge of, gee, was that really a disqualifying qualification? So, we need to be very clear. I don't think we need to iron that out right now, but before we write the ordinance, we need to have that, so we can bring that back. And we may want to discuss that now. What are disqualifying...
So, Mr. Mallor, does the state say what certain disqualifications are? I mean, I own, I have a liquor license. I have a restaurant. The sheriff isn't doing to me what he's doing to cannabis growers, and I'm still...
I'll still not federal.
So are there rules in the state that say you cannot have somebody in your business who has, and fill in the blank?
That's what I think we need, is very clear standards of, these are disqualifying, and if it's the same disqualifications that the state has, that the sheriff wants to use, wants to make sure that there is, you know, our own local background, that's fine, but we just need to make sure that it's clear and concise.
When you get there, you'll be bringing that before us, correct?
Well, it's not real clear. Julie Reed, can you read what it says, what the state says?
Well, this is gonna, it would take forever to go through the whole thing. There's a slight complication in that. There's an incoming law, January 1st, 2020, which is also going to make some changes, but the urgency ordinance language came in part from what was then state law, and I think that the state developed something that was intended to be ministerial, but knowing that there's a buzzy line. It had language that if conviction, if you have a conviction, it always has to be a conviction, not an arrest, that is substantially related to the qualifications, functions, or duties of the business for which licensure is sought. That was the standard. And then they had some types of convictions that were automatically considered substantially related, such as any felony conviction per PC 667.5, any serious violent felony conviction. There's lists of actual convictions that go on forever in the penal code. And so, what I think we're going to need to have in place, either the board would probably need to direct the sheriff and staff to work out some legally defensible set of standards that are alternative to what the state has, or in addition to what the state has, or will have to sound somewhat similar in terms of the type of language used to make it adequately ministerial. Otherwise, we're looking at more of a conditional use permit type of process with the sheriff making recommendations to the planning commission. So, there's a trade-off in terms of how much discretion we use. And so, I don't know if the board wants to split it, so that the conditional use permit applicants have a separate individualized recommendation from the sheriff. The board could do that, or the board could have a ministerial background check process that's a separate animal, which we had talked about with the sheriff, of having people apply, even possibly prior to this ordinance being finalized. If we were to get a small ordinance for background checks before the board that included the ID badge, and we had standards in there, and we had an appeal process in there, that could be started before we even finalize the permanent cannabis ordinance. So, these are all... So these are all options that the board has, but it's important to understand the importance of needing to have criteria that are both defensible from constitutional perspective and also that satisfy any ministerial permit process that you're intending to set up.
Are you confused now?
No, totally not. Okay, I mean, I've lost the vote on his and mine, but there is one more part, a separate appeals process. Can we not use the same appeals process that we're using? Is there some reason we would need a separate appeals process?
We could use, the board could choose, as long as we provide some sort of process for denying an application for any reason, including the background check.
Okay.
Whether we do it as a separate appeal through the sheriff's office, through 8.6, cannabis regs would be up to the board of whatever they think would be most efficient. But to satisfy basic constitutional norms, we need to have, if background checks are basis for denial of a permit, we have, that has to be one of the things that they can appeal if they disagree with the results.
Okay, I was just trying not to have separate, if we could have a process for appeal and not one here and one here. Okay, that's fine, you can move on, Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, these, my colleagues want to say something.
Supervisor Mills.
No, we already had three votes to agree with.
We already had three votes.
We've talked about that.
We already had the votes.
I'm with you.
About forty minutes ago, we had the...
What is the direction, Chris? My direction or their direction?
Majority's direction. Supervisor Toffenelli, sum it up.
I, I believe, and tell me if you disagree, that they may pre, the sheriff's recommendation along with your recommendation is good, as long as the process of the background, during the process of the background check, the owner or the employees may proceed with either the work or the application pending approval.
So the board wants a separate ordinance that will deal with the background check and ID badge, and how would the board, is there a time limit, or when does the board have the sheriff to get back to you with this ordinance and including the standards that have been vetted through?
I would, I personally would assume that it would be in line with, with this current regulation ordinance, so they should be directly in line. So, I mean, his is not going to be as in-depth as this, so he has much longer to do less.
Okay.
Okay, I want to be, I want to be clear on what he's saying here, that we're gonna continue processing the permit while the background check is going on. We're not gonna issue a permit to start growing.
Yes, that's, that's what I intended to say. If I said something different, I apologize.
Okay, all right, so I wanted to be clear that we're gonna continue the processing of the permit during the background.
Supervisor Toffenelli, supervisor Stopper, supervisor Mills, you all agree with that? Supervisor Calloway?
Come on, Marita.
Yes?
All right, thank you.
And I'm yes, five oh. Say it louder. She already said she agreed with the sheriff, don't push it.
Wasted forty minutes of my life.
You're gonna make me miss Taco Tuesday if you keep it up.
You can have my tickets.
I already have some.
So, we may have already talked about this, according, code enforcement appeals process, whether it goes through a hearing officer or the planning commission. I believe that there's hearing officer for the ministerial type permits and planning commission for conditional use permits. Further discussion on that?
Do you want to repeat that again?
No.
So, the ministerial type permits would go through the hearing officer process if there's a need for an appeal. If the conditional use permit were to be denied by the commission or approved, they have the right to appeal to the board.
Yeah, okay. Planning commission first and then ultimately the board.
Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of that, yes.
Supervisor Calloway?
Number twenty-nine?
We are. She asked me a question and I guess this is gonna take a while.
No, I mean, I think shortly.
Can we let Dennis say yes before you?
Yes.
Okay, did we have a quorum, Marita?
My question to Dennis was, if you wanted to appeal the hearing officer, can you appeal to the board? And he said no.
That's, that's up to you guys. You could, you could have that procedure occur. The way we do cannabis enforcement, the hearing officer makes the final administrative order, and that has to be appealed to Superior Court. The, you could, you could change the ordinance for the purposes of cannabis applications and have it be, have it go to you.
Don't go there.
But that's, that's if, I mean, many of these board members were sitting for many cannabis appeals and they know what it's like, so...
Please don't do that to us again, okay? Superior Court is a good track for it.
We don't want to make sure you get your question answered.
I think anything regarding this county is appealable to the Board of Supervisors. So, I mean, then was then, and I understand how hard it was on everybody at that time, but now's now, and we're already saying we're dealing with a smaller group that going, have prior registration and good standing and a temporary license, and if they don't like what a hearing officer said, no different than anything else in code enforcement, they can appeal to the board. And that's, and it's more costly for the county and the public to go to court, so...
I've got, go ahead, supervisor Stopper.
Either, either way's good with me, as long as they're afforded due process by another appeal, either way's good with me, but we do have three already on the original route, unless someone else wants to change their mind.
We, we would have to change 806 ordinance and go through that. We've already gone down that road. The ones that have been here, we know what's, yeah, so...
Okay, so, there's four yeses. Supervisor Calloway, who are a...
Well, as it's presented, yeah, I'm fine on that. It's what happens after the hearing. What happens after the hearing officer, I'm not fine with.
So yes or no?
She said yes.
Yes, okay, five of you.
Okay.
Two hundred and thirty.
Okay, that's...
That's five oh.
Okay. Number thirty. Peter?
Okay, so, site remediation. This was something that was included in the ban ordinance. We also, I think, had provisions in that in the planning commission's draft ordinance. Just want to make sure that if a site is abandoned, that it is cleaned up. Doesn't mean, you know, fully, you know, returned to its state prior to cultivation, but there's not debris left over, you know, chemicals and that kind of thing. The timeframe that we had in the ban ordinance seemed a bit excessive if we want to get things cleaned up, so we're suggesting that we keep those same standards, but we shorten the timeframe, and I don't really have a specific timeframe right now. I think that's something we can work out as we, you know, develop the ordinance, but it would be certainly shorter than the year or two that we have currently.
I would agree with that.
Supervisor Stopper?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
I would agree with a caveat that there are many of the sites from the ban ordinance that have still not been remediated, so my concern is whether or not code enforcement would really have the capacity to work in a shorter time window that they already have. So I'd have to, I'd have to see a little better work done on that area. I would approve, but the understanding that...
Supervisor Calloway? Since I'm not allowed any buts, you're not allowed any buts. So yes and I know.
It's getting late. Yes?
That's fine.
Yes, five oh. Roma's there, guys, hang in there.
Okay, then bonding. The state requires a $5,000 surety for the destruction of plants if they're found to be not operating in compliance with the state licensure. The question's whether or not we want to have some sort of surety for compliance with our regulations.
I would be in favor of the staff recommendation of $5,000 surety bond. For a $5,000 bond yearly, that's not very much, you have to pay for that bond, very little.
Supervisor Stopper?
I, I, I'm in agreement with, along with the state bonding, on top of the state bonding, yes, absolutely.
Supervisor Mills?
I agree with the surety bond, but I don't know if that's enough.
Supervisor Calloway?
For what, Mr. Mauer? What would the purpose of the bond be?
This would actually go back towards the remediation to ensure that at least there's some, some funds if we end up having to do some cleanup ourselves. You know, it's hard to say what the amount, it could, it could vary dramatically from site to site depending on what's out there.
Fine, yes.
Yes, it's five oh. Congratulations, made it to our list. Are there further comments before we open up to public comments that we can have some rebuttal on what we just did? Oh, you need a break?
Wait, 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 we have item number thirty-two. I spoke to Mr. Mauer during the break, and his presentation was fantastic. The staff did a wonderful job putting it together, covered all the bases except for one that I pointed out nowhere in here. Giving all the items that we went through for this ordinance, does it have a maximum growth site or growth?
We did address that during the last meeting.
We didn't address it here, though. It's not here. Is it 22,000 square feet? Is it one acre, five acres per hundred acre? What, what is it that we are going to agree on?
Sure, excuse me, Director Mauer, how do you want to take this one on?
As I recall, supervisor Toffenelli's right, it was not included in the list. I think that we discussed that at the last meeting, and I think we agreed that it was to remain at the 22,000 square feet. But I, we have to go back and look at my notes to make sure.
State, state regs is what had been discussed, so it was one acre what we had discussed, but we're at a new meeting now, so...
Microphone.
So we, I, Julie's looking at her notes and I think we agreed on a type-three license, which is a medium mixed light or medium outdoor, which was...
So, there's, the license types are divided into specialty outdoor, or specialty licenses, all of which is outdoor, indoor, mixed light, specialty cottage, small, medium, and the large licenses are not going to be allowed by the state for a while. So the medium for outdoor goes up to one acre, 10,000 feet to one acre. The medium indoor goes from 10,001 to 22,000 square feet. Medium mixed light goes from 10,001 to 22,000 square feet. So the state law default goes up to one acre for a medium license.
And we should have had this discussion when we had minimum lot sizes then, because I think a lot of the discussion we were having may have been based on 22,000 square feet or half an acre on those lot sizes.
That's true.
Supervisor Stopper, where are you?
I thi, I think that the reason we had pushed up to 20 acres was because I was under the impression that we were discussing one acre grows, and that's the reason I pushed up to 40 acres before we could start doing co-location.
Supervisor Mills? I agree with Mr. Toffenelli. Okay, so you're 22.
Twenty-two.
Ben, you're up to 44.
Well, just under 44, it's 43,000 and some odd.
One acre, up to one acre. Supervisor Calloway?
State regs.
I'll go with this, up to medium, so that's up to one acre too as well. So, I will join you and Ben on this, so we're up to one acre.
Excellent, all right.
All right, is there thirty, is there thirty-three?
Well, Chair, I trust that staff is doing a good job of keeping track of the costs to date, so that we don't run into what we did with the urgency ordinance, that nobody knows how much it really cost us to do it. So, let's not, let's not get ourselves in a situation where we're gonna forensically try to reconstruct our costs, because they can, under, under proposition, be allocated correctly if we know what they really were to put this together. It should be part of the inclusion of the costs of the program.
Mr. Mauer, is there any other questions that we need to answer as a board before we open up to public comment for rebuttal on our acts?
I don't have anything else at this time.
I would like to commend you on really putting together a very logical sequence.
Thank you.
Thank you, it was a lot of work. We all gotta be in.
We're not done yet.
We're not done yet. What we'll do is we will have, we'll take a quick break, we'll come back, go to public comment, and then we will discuss it again to see...
How quick is quick?
Everybody has ten minutes, so, 4:25. We're gonna go to public comment right now, but we were just talking about the fire safety issue as we went through this, and I'd like to ask, and I know that the fire departments or the chiefs want to have something to say about this, so, Madam Clerk, we won't hold them for three minutes. Who wants to come and talk for the chiefs?
I'm letting the uniform have priority, yes. Indeed. He's got his own uniform. Chief?
I know it's a long day, and when you hit the fire safety part, I was trying to make eye contact, raise my hand, I did not want to walk up, because I got in trouble at one meeting before doing that. I think only the sheriff's allowed to do that, you know? So I was, I was disappointed.
My apologies.
No worries. So I'll be honest, I was not under the impression that we're gonna be doing indoor grows. Again, for me, I don't care what we do, but as the fire chief, I have the right to make sure that our buildings in our community are safe. So, when I looked up on there and it said that we'll be notified, I want to be clear, what does that mean to me? Is that a phone call? Is that a letter? Because when it's gonna go in a building 10,000 square foot, it's a big enough issue that the National Fire Protection Association across the United States has put language in there to protect us, because there's a lot of things going on. And I'm very happy that these are gonna be registered growers, and I'm gonna work with them in my community, but I gotta take care of my people. And when I go out at two o'clock in the morning and a 10,000 square foot building's on fire, that's a huge concern for me. It's a concern for fire flow, it's a concern for wildland urban interface, and it's a concern for electrical and problems that are gonna kill firefighters. That's a concern of ours, because for us, it's an unknown right now. And anybody who wants to tackle me on it, you can tackle me on it. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna tough on this one, because at the end of the day, my job is to make sure my guys and girls go home safe. So, with that said, I'm sure your question is, how does that relate to other buildings in the community? Well, my community's building more than any other community in Calaveras County, and I work very well with the planning department and the building department. And when, there's two things that happen, new construction and there's tenement improvement. If any of those two things happen, I get the full documentation from the building department and plan checks, and I have an opportunity to vet that, look through it, get a chance to look at the fire flow, get a chance to look at the electrical, get a chance to look at exiting, all the things that I make everybody else do. An example is DaVinci's right now. They went into Napa Auto. Now they're a delicatessen. He had to jump through a lot of hoops. Kid Zone, it's going into a strip mall. She had to jump through a lot of hoops to make sure, through the health and safety code and the fire code, that everything is done correct. Because if we don't, unfortunately in my job, when it goes bad, guess who they come after? They're coming after the fire chief, you know? And you saw that in Oakland with the grocery ship fire. You can't do what you're doing and just turn your head, and I'm not gonna let that happen with us. So all I'm asking, and when it comes back to fire safety, we want, if it's gonna be, if a cannabis grower's gonna go unregulated and they're gonna alter the building so they can make sure that it takes care of their electrical, whatever they're doing for their lighting, whatever, that we're noticed, we have a process like we do right now with our grocery outlet, all the other buildings going in, nothing changes. There's no, there's no preferential either way. It's a system, it's a system that works very well. We're very connected with Randy, with plan checks, and the... We're very connected with Randy, with plan checks, and the fire chief in the local district has the opportunity to look at it, throw it in the trash can, or to look at it and do the right thing. And go out and take a look. And that's my thing, taking a look at it and making sure that they continue their business so they don't have a fire and lose it, and it gets out into the wildland urban interface, and we have a bigger problem.
I'd just like to basically kind of say the same thing is, we want to have a meaningful notification that we have enough information that, you know, we can look at these. And I think it actually applies both to indoor and outdoor. I agree that there's perhaps more issues with the indoor grows, but even the outdoor grows, this is not just like any other agricultural industry. Perhaps someday in the future it will be, but right now it isn't. And we need to make sure that we're getting enough information, that we can evaluate it as fire districts, and maybe we don't need to do anything else. Maybe the process that you guys are developing will address every issue that we could foresee, but we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to do that so that we can address any specific fire safety issues.
And again, last but not least, in the fire business part, our job is to keep the business going, to keep them in service, so they don't have a problem down the road.
So, you know, so I don't think anybody was proposing, I certainly didn't imagine someone could put up a ten thousand square foot without having fire marshal, fire chief sign off. Like that was, I mean, did anybody else think that that was possible on the, on a build? A ten thousand square foot building, you're going to have to walk through, I mean, whether it's a beauty salon or a cannabis farm.
But when he's, when he's talking about, even if it's a two thousand square foot building, I think that the proper process should be followed as per the building and code requirements that actually include the fire marshal, or in this case, the chiefs in Calaveras County at this time. And I think we should define that as such. So I thank you for bringing this to light. There should be some clarity to the process. And just, you know, notification, I can understand their concern. That could be a very broad statement, and notification goes to the point where we would hold those to the same standard as we would any other.
New business.
New business, or even, even a building that was a business before that needs to go through a structural retrofit or electrical retrofit when it goes into building or cut.
That's exactly right. And that's the example of Napa Auto parts that changed over to DaVinci's. And if you talk to Mr. Trotter, he had to go through a lot of things.
I think, I think everything there is in place, sir. We just need to provide that clarity as we move forward with the ordinance. And I, I believe we have a consensus here to support you on that.
Is there anybody who thinks it should be under a different set of codes and directions?
I am wondering why we're even talking about this on indoor growth. The process should be the same, whether it's Napa Auto parts, the deli, or the beauty shop. So I don't think we should have to, the process isn't going to change. So we're just going, I don't know why we would need to explain that in an ordinance because we're not asking the building department or planning to do a carve-out.
And I understand that. I just wanted, I've been here all day. And I wanted an opportunity to speak on behalf of the fire districts. And I did not know we were going to indoor grows. Again, my job is, you call 911, we come every time. We don't judge. But when it, when I saw that up there, I just wanted an opportunity to go, we're okay, right? I'm going to get the notification, I'm going to get my stuff. Because I didn't want it to be, we both talked, I didn't want it to be, I get a phone call that cannabis went into service, they didn't make any changes on the building, and they're at walk and don't walk.
Yeah. Chief, I don't think there's, I don't think there's anybody up here who's seen that. There are some items on when we notify you, when the cannabis grower notifies you about outdoor grows as well, according to state rules, and Julie, you've got a little research on that. You want to talk about that? Just so you know, we've got the building, but you need to know what's coming on the outside side.
We could, the board could require the, and I think that, I mean, I think we probably would have just done this as a matter of course, even as just sort of a procedural thing, that the growers would submit a copy to us of what they've submitted to the state, including a diagram. They have to submit per regulation, CDFA Regulation 8105, a diagram to scale that includes the boundaries of the premises where any cultivation activity is taking place, all perimeter dimensions, all entrances and exits to the premises, all entrances and exits to the property. If premises is less than the property boundary, they have to show where the premises is in relation to the property line, what the rest of the property is used for. So we can require that the cultivation applicant, permit applicants, to submit that same diagram to us locally and then provide it to the fire departments if that would be helpful.
That would be great. Because again, we're dealing with two things. We're dealing, which is going to be positive, the regulated grows, but at two o'clock in the morning, I got the other grows too. So sure nice for me to know, I got all the information, all the combat intelligence I need. Because when I'm going out the door at two o'clock in the morning in the middle of July, I'm thinking a veg fire. And I don't know, there might be a grow, I mean, I'm pretty good on my grows, but I, it's just good combat intelligence, and it gives me situational awareness that I know exactly what's going in my hundred and sixty-five square miles in my district. It's a lot to cover.
Does anybody have any objection to sharing, I mean, they're turning into the state anyway. As part of notification to share those plans?
I don't have any objections. I think they should reciprocate to us. I mean, if they can, anything provided, it's easy. They just do two copies.
Supervisor Mills?
The more we can share with the fire districts, the more information you have available, the less likely you're going to come into a confined spaces problem in an open area. And that, to me, is the greatest fear of the fire districts, is suddenly your whole tactic will change, and the amount of manpower and what you're going to need to make it work will change. And it's sometimes you didn't even know that that was, that was there. It's that sudden surprise that you didn't have in your pre-fire plan that, that can create the destruction and the damage to, the injuries to personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Calloway, any objections?
I think, I already had.
I think, I think we're good. I think the staff is direction.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience all day.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Now we will move on to public comment. I would ask, first I want to compliment everybody. Everybody's been really great today and being respectful of each other. It reflects very well on both you and the county. Thank you very much. Let's keep it up. People are getting tired, but let's keep it up and let's be respectful. And I think you guys know where I stand on sniping, so. Phil, we get it off. And as always, five in a row back there, please. We've got plenty of fire chiefs here. Don't want to get in trouble with fire marshal. They set the rules.
My name is Bill McManus from the ban committee. What I want to do is just kind of tie this thing up, this is, it's happening pretty fast. It's pretty apparent that this board has now changed positions and wants to throw this county back into the grinder again like we were a couple of years ago. Everything I can see about what's been said today is just the urgency ordinance on steroids. It's, there's really nothing different. What I would say that this is such an important topic that I am extremely disappointed in my supervisor for not being more prepared to address some of the topics. When you talk about why can't people have different licenses and all that, read Prop 64. It's called vertical integration. When you talk about can we have one plant in the backyard, read Prop 64. No, it has to be indoors. There's no outdoor growing with Prop 64. You continuously make comparisons of, well, with cannabis and vineyards, cannabis and my liquor license, cannabis and, every single one of those comparisons, on one side, all of the activities were legal. Cannabis is still federally banned. Why you want to do this in the face of an EIR from a year and a half ago that resulted in the alternative, the preferred alternative being a ban, is absolutely beyond me. There shouldn't ever be any commercial cultivation in a residential area. I don't care if it's R, 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 A, R10, R6, I don't care what it is. It doesn't belong in neighborhoods. The document that I passed out to you is my last futile attempt to present another idea, which is indoor growing only. And ninety percent of what you did today would be out the window, would be totally unnecessary with indoor growing. So much easier to control. And no matter what happens, no matter how bad the ordinance is that you come out with, no matter how badly you want to screw this county up and serve someone else other than the residents of this county, when you get this regulation, I dare you, I double dog dare you, to put it on the ballot. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Bill.
I know, I know. You're throwing me off. That's okay, that's okay. I'll finish. I can finish.
Thank you, Bill. Sorry.
Even with interruptions. I double dog dare you to put it on the ballot alongside of the ban and let the people of this county decide this issue once and for all. I'm sick and tired, and the people of this county are sick and tired of every two years going back and forth, flip-flopping on this thing, depending on who got elected, who put who in office and everything else. This has got to stop. It is tearing this county apart. Every time we change directions, the fabric of this county is being ripped apart. And I'm tired of seeing it. Put it on the ballot, let the people decide this issue like the boards before you said, never did it. This issue is too big for five people to decide. And if you think that you represent the people of this county and you're going to allow this.
Thank you very much, Paul.
And I'm just trying to make up for my interruption. But hey, don't worry about it, Jack.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep this short because I know you've done a tremendous amount of work, and I may not agree with you on everything, but I appreciate the work that you put in. But I'm, you know, this gets confusing because just a couple of weeks ago, we just spent just a few hours on saying that we shouldn't have a certain type of cannabis because it would attract crime and illegal grows, that it would affect other agricultural businesses, that it would have an impact on our water use and our environment, and it was a public nuisance because of odors. So we put a moratorium, said you can't grow that. And here we are spending, what, six hours now, talking about bringing back a cannabis that has all the same problems plus more. It doesn't make sense to me. You know, the best thing to do is keep the ban in effect. It's really not a ban, it's strict regulation. People can still grow their own private stash and what they need. But how can you, one week, say that one type of cannabis, because it doesn't have THC, it doesn't get you high? We can't have that. But the one that gets you high, the one that's going to impact our children and have a negative impact on them, and more and more research keeps coming out on the effect it has on them, but we want that one. And then I, appalled that one of our supervisors kind of flippantly says, well, we don't need fences to keep kids out because they can just buy it in front of the school. That's ridiculous. We should be focused on protecting our children. They're our next generation. They get their hands on this stuff, this high THC stuff that's being produced, it has a negative impact on them. They have proven that it affects their brain development, it affects their IQ development, it increases schizophrenia in people that are prone to that, it causes psychotic episodes in people that, because they don't know the amount they're getting. It's just, I guess I'm shocked at some of the conversation. And then we don't want to listen to our, to people that provide safety in our county, our sheriff's department. You know, he's saying, I need background checks. Well, we don't need to do them on the local level. I want to tell you something about businesses. There are businesses where you have to have multiple background checks to do your job. I was on it, worked for a company for doing material testing where I had to be background checked. I had three different background checks from three different school districts. I had to go get fingerprinted three different times because they can't share information. I had to go get a federal background check to go do testing on Beal Air Force Base. I had four different background checks. As a pastor, I had to have a background check to work with kids. And I had all my workers' background checked to work with kids. That's just part of doing business. I'm just appalled that we think we need to throw stuff like that out the window. But I want to thank you, you know, for the hard work you did, and continue with the hard work, but consider going back to the ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Hello, staff, board. A little nervous here. My name is Ricardo Morales, and I have property up at McCullough Hill. But I want to state that I'm a medical patient, I'm a veteran, and I have a bunch of my friends, I have older friends, seventy-five, that use cannabis oils, all kinds of different rubs. And I want to be able to supply them, okay? I want to be able to help them out like I've been doing for a long time. I've been in a medical since 1996 when it first started. And I just want to continue what I'm doing. I don't sell it. I, I help my friends, I make topicals for them. And it does take more leaf, more marijuana, to make these different chemicals of rubs for arthritis, for all kinds of pain. And I just want to be able to grow my property. My property is clean. And my property you can use, for an example, I only have just under five acres. I could buy the acreage next to me, and, you know, which would give me nine point two acres, which still, you know, not there. But I want to be able to do what I'm going to, what I want to do, and hopefully you guys will let me do it on my acres that I do have, which is four point five one acres. I'm out of everybody's way. I actually help out over there. I mean, I'm trying to make the road for fire department to come easy because right now, on a couple of those street bends, they can't turn those big trucks. So I'm doing it. I bought a tractor. I'm building a house. My house is almost finished. And I just want to be able to grow and, you know, help my friends out. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, board. I'm Mary Ellen Souza. I live in Mountain Ranch, specifically in the Cave City area. And because I work, I steal away an hour here or there to come in when I can. And it's, it's difficult, and I need to run back to work, but I just wanted to throw in a couple of quick comments. I have not heard the extent of the entire conversation. I do want to say thank you for the efforts. I want to especially recognize Supervisor Garmandy for trying to keep things on track and respectful and keep the discourse civil. So thank you for doing that. It really is appreciated. On a, on a personal note, in terms of where my property lies, there are two and a half acre minimums. Behind me is an unclassified acreage of twenty acres. My question is, how is that dealt with with what you're doing right here? That twenty acres, can someone now grow right behind me so that I'm looking at a grow right behind me? Which would encourage people coming across. Fencing does matter, and I understand that the folks that really want to do things legally and do it correct understand security issues. That said, anybody, yes, can jump a fence. But in rural areas, I don't want a liquor store, even though it's legal, I don't want that next door to me any more than I want a pot farm next to me, okay? What I do know on Cave City Road is I stopped jogging and working my dog down my road when the total chaos of all of this erupted. The ban has quieted that down, but as recently as about a month ago, there was a huge bus down the road from me. I am extremely cautious because I'm not going to be a victim, I'm not going to allow my dog to be a victim, and it affects my neighborhood. So has life been calmer since the ban has been in effect? Absolutely. I don't grow it, store it, transport it, eat it, drink it, smoke it, or whatever else you want to do with it. But I respect people's individual rights to do things that do not stomp on my rights. So I would urge you to look at those situations because they're out there, like my property, that butts against a twenty acre. I have no idea if somebody can come in and grow there, and I don't know if you all know yet. So I appreciate your taking a hard look at that. Again, I know the ban has worked for me personally. It's also worked for what I do for a living. I work with adults with developmental disabilities, and I can tell you for a fact that marijuana has an impact, often different than expected, on people with autism and people with underlying mental health conditions. I've seen it, I've lived it with them, and it's not pretty. So again, I'm going to respect individual rights, but I also want to let you know that this is not a can of beer we're talking about. Thanks so much, and again, I appreciate the civil discourse.
Hi, everybody. I didn't intend to speak today, but I've heard a lot of things that affect me personally and communally that I feel like I, I feel like I have to speak up. I feel like I have to stand up for the little guy. Some of you know me, Jack, Peter, some of you new people, first time you're going to meet me. But I'm a, I'm what you would consider the good player, right? Peter actually helped me out, and this is one of the things I wanted to talk about. You guys said you needed to have a temporary state ID, or the state licensing. I was one of the very first, and Peter can verify it if you don't believe me, I was one of the very first people to pass. of the very first people to pass. When Courtney Minehart came to my facility, he left my place shaking my hand saying, "This is the best place I've ever been to. I don't have trash. I do have kids. I have a family. I'm actually the leader of my home. I have an 87-year-old woman, a 56-year-old man, a 23-year-old girl, a two-year-old daughter, and an almost two-month-old baby coming up. I take care of us all and because I do things the right way, I've always done them the right way. I don't want to look over my back, I don't want to look over my shoulder." When I had to re-register for my second time because I was one of the first ones to be approved, Peter actually helped me out and what happened was there was an error in the office, I don't know if you recall this, and because of that, I wasn't able to reapply for my licensing. Well, I knew the ban was coming, I knew all those things were coming, but again, I wanted to stay in compliance. I went to Peter, he reissued me a license, and in the time that it had taken them to reissue me, we were banned. So the state temporary didn't actually go through on my end. And again, I'm one of the good people. Another thing that's an important thing to notice is RR. I know that's a huge discussion, I know it's a big thing. I have over 20 acres. I have 20 point something acres. I'm in Mountain Ranch, I'm far away from everybody. When you guys have 100-foot setback, I tripled it. When you guys say you want this, I tripled them. I did it all the right way. The problem with eliminating us RRs or RTs or whatever you want to call it is we are the good ones. We're the ones that paid our taxes on time, we're the ones that never complained, we're the ones that always complied. I'm the one that abated the day that you guys told me to. I haven't had a plan out since. And now I hear things like we're going to go to indoor and this and the other, yet still, the little guy, RR or RT or whatever the hell you want to call it, can't do anything. And what you're doing is you're opening up for those who do have a lot of money to come in and you're just going to eliminate the locals. You're eliminating the people that actually spend their money here, like me. I hope that you're willing to look into it and if it comes to indoor and indoor only, I hope you accept RT or RR or whatever. Again, I got 20 acres, maybe it's got to be a case-by-case judgment, but if we're going to hold everyone to a standard, let's hold everyone to a standard.
Thank you.
Did you know the lingering, powerful, nauseating stench, skunk-like smell of marijuana farms can carry over half a mile? That's 2,600 feet and beyond, forcing neighbors inside their homes. I wanted to talk about code compliance. My neighborhood has been working with code compliance since April of 2016 to get a couple of properties where people are camping to deal with those issues. As of today, and these places, these properties in my neighborhood have no house, no water, no well, no septic, no electricity, and as of today, they're still living there. And it's a few different properties. And I have called code compliance along with neighbors multiple times, written emails, sent complaints over the last three years, and they're still there. So for those of you watching at home, don't be fooled thinking code compliance can take care of those issues. The other thing I want to talk about, which nobody talked about today, is the water tables. The water tables in Copperopolis are low to none. Drawing the groundwater near our residential area could severely, severely impact the local residents' wells. We don't have city water available to us. We are dependent on our wells. And of the houses in my area, a few of them run out of water during the summer already. That's how low the tables are. So per the EIR, a 22,000-square-foot outdoor grow requires 400,000 gallons of water. So we're upping that now to one acre. That's 800,000 gallons of water. And each parcel can have five grows. So now we're talking about 4 million gallons of water per parcel with five grows. That's enough water to support 27 people for one year. You really need to address this issue before you come up with a permanent ordinance. Somehow, some way, it needs to be in there where you take a look at the water tables and if they don't support that kind of activity, then the permit cannot be issued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry McBride, Mountain Ranch. Yeah, my hat is off to you guys. It was a joy to watch you discuss, even in disagreement. It's what I would love to see our supervisors do every week. It really made me proud of every single one of you. I don't agree with a couple of you, and you know it, but I was really impressed with today's meeting. I am for this grow, you guys know that, I've spoken of it a few times. I understand her concern about water, mine, I had to replace my pump. I was surrounded by illegal grows. So, I mean, you can, there always work with that. If you've got a water issue, have them truck the water in. It was done before. Rancher up by us made lots of money providing water as needed for the growers, so that can be done. And I'm still completely for it because I see what these people are like. I see them as family folk, I see them as people that love this county, I see them as people that are going to let our local businesses cash registers start ringing and bringing in money and bringing on hiring because we have some of the highest unemployment in this county that's going to help with that. I see them as a positive part of our community and I'm grateful that you guys are going to give them the chance to do that. And don't make it so onerous that we lose the good guys. Work with, sometimes you're just going to have to, you know, we don't have round pegs up here. Everybody's going to be a little bit different, like that young man that was just speaking and that type of stuff, we're going to have to work with him a bit. But I do support very much allowing the grows. I think what you came up with seemed awfully reasonable to me. I don't grow. I mean, I'm getting nothing out of this, don't think I do. But I'm happy to see that you guys are working on this and bringing it together. And I'd love to be able to go to a budget meeting, you guys in a year or two say, "Oh my gosh, we have enough money," right? Won't that be a first? Marita, how often has that happened in the past? Wouldn't it be nice to take some of that money? Her comments last week about the buildings up in her area are totally valid. Why not find a way to help fund those organizational buildings that would provide disaster help to folks during a fire? You're going to be able to now, you're going to have the funding come in. And I think that is powerful and you can use that money to fund other organizations, other good groups, the library and such. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason DeSalvatore. Just want to say I support the direction that the board's going in. Watching all the comments and the discussion today, just a comment regarding the distribution, which came up. There was debates about this and different license types. There's actually multiple different tiers of distribution licenses through the BCC in the state of California. The lower-level tier is a self-distribution-only license. It's a Type 13 distribution license, that's a much lower tier, much lower flat fee based on how much revenue you create as a distributor. It only allows you to transport and sell your own product, so I think that kind of fits with how you guys were kind of classify that and might be an easy solution. And just want to reiterate that we support the direction that the board's going in.
Doc, Sandy? What does he got to come up?
Mexican stamp. I can't get my PC to unlock. Sorry about that. Sandy Maitrot D2. Wanted to again reiterate I support commercial cannabis in Calaveras County. And it wasn't always that way, but I stand before you today as one who sees the value. My gravest concern, and I wanted to bring that forward, is overall county capability. And that's on multiple levels, and I'm not saying that we can't do this, but I'm saying we might want to consider approaching it a little bit differently than we have in the past. As a season program and project manager, I stand before you today in support of a controlled deployment associated with a new regulatory program, and I think that's how we are proposing approaching this. But what I want to toss out there is whether or not the county could possibly consider using an iterative model when crafting the program deployment strategy that you use. So let me take a few minutes to explain, and it maps to the handout that I very quickly crafted. It's called an iterative model, and it's an implementation approach that focuses on an initial simplified implementation, which then progressively gains more complexity. After an initial planning phase, a small handful of stages are repeated over and over. You get better and better at what you do, with each completion of the cycle incrementally improving or growing that iterative process. Enhancements to the program can be quickly recognized and implemented throughout each iteration, allowing the next phase loop to be at least marginally better than the last one. So when you look at the handout I gave you, the phases include planning and requirements. You map out the high-level project, you do that in an initial stage of planning, you establish clear requirements, and you generally prepare for the upcoming stages when you do that. Then you step into analysis and design, and some of that involves nailing down the phase content and the details required for each stage of the project. You then establish technical requirements that can be utilized in order to meet the given needs of each iteration that you ultimately plan out. Then you work towards implementation, and that's when you actually do the work. You test, and by that I mean you come back and you say, "What worked well in this phase? What do we change? What do we modify?" And then you do an evaluation of the overall deployment at that level. The thing that I'm asking for is that we start small and somewhat controlled, create phases, clear timelines and schedules, and enhance the current iteration when the county feels they can truly support it. And I think that was the biggest problem with the urgency ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Prepona Randall Smith, District Four. I'd like to congratulate everybody, but I'm going to get right to the two items. Regarding distribution, I want to clarify that it is possible to hold a distribution license and another license. And we have an entity in this county now that has that without being a micro-business. Little Trees has its cultivation license, which is separate from its dispensary or retail license. And the reason is the two activities are on separate premises. They're in the same building, but the premises are separate. So it is possible to allow distribution, allow growers to have a distribution license. They would have two separate licenses and as long as there's no doors between the two, as long as they're on separate premises, they could be on the same parcel, but they have to be separate premises. So you can do distribution, Type 11, not Type 13. It is possible to hold two licenses. Micro-business requires you have three of the four activities, which is a different question. So it is possible, it is doable. Next, I'd like to address item number three on conditional approval. Supervisor Mills, I'm impressed today with you, I have to say. You've been pretty reasonable on a lot of items, but on this one, I think you got something wrong. The idea was not to let people have a bonfire, AKA grow. The idea was to allow people to have their mothers and their clones and basically keep their genetics going and keep it safe so that when they get their license, then they can put those in the ground and grow. Nobody's talking about a conditional approval to grow. It's about preparation, it's about protecting genetics. And so what we, I'd like to, you know, bring it back that it would help everybody literally save three, four months of time if you allow people under some kind of conditional approval. For example, the county can say yes to the state application upon receipt of the application. I mean, that's, they're in compliance. When you apply, you may have not been permitted, but you're complying with the law, and on that basis, the county could say yes to the state, and of course, nobody puts their plants in the ground and flowers their plants unless they have both of those, the state and the local permission acquired. So no one's talking about growing or doing anything without both, but we're talking about the preparation of the clones and the mothers. And then, yeah, that's pretty much that. I have 20 seconds. You know, I am impressed at this meeting today. It's probably been the best meeting on this issue we've seen yet through all these years. I appreciate the input. The five O's blow my mind on the number of issues. I would love to see a five O vote today on this ordinance. I think it would be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doc.
Hey, good afternoon. Carlos Boyol, District One. I want to reiterate what Doc Smith was saying. You know, I'm really, really impressed with the conversation we had today. Everyone kept a really open mind. I think we're actually talking about real issues now and we're being receptive and trying to make good, common-sense solutions to a lot of these problems that we've been dealing with. That being said, I want to just, you know, point out some things that were said today and, you know, in defense of the growers. I guess one of the first things that was mentioned was how we were dragging out the permitting process during the UO. And, you know, I know a lot of this is really unnecessary to say, but I just have to say in defense to the growers, that the UO was really a mess. There was no real clear direction. So if things were dragged out, they may look like they were dragged out, but, you know, we were told we needed permits for some things and we didn't need permits for some things and it may have looked like we were dragging them out, but, you know, we were all just trying to stay alive, trying to stay afloat and trying to, you know, get our ducks in line without getting swallowed up by the program that was just trying to figure itself out, really. So, you know, just keep that in mind. We weren't really pushing this. You know, it's really sad to see RR go down. I know the biggest problem is odor in traffic, and if that's really a big problem, I think we really need to look at that through a different lens. You know, odor in traffic really are things that I think we should be able to deal with. You know, the odor really is only bad for four weeks out of the year. Realistically, it's only four weeks out of the whole entire year. You know, if you really have an issue with it, keep your windows closed. You know, when we have fires and there's ash and, you know, smoke all around, we keep our windows closed because we can't take that smell and that's just part of life, you know? We're living with other people, we don't live in a bubble. So, you know, not to, not to take away from the importance of that, but, you know, just different perspective there. Setbacks, you know, we're dealing with these arbitrary numbers. I think what the woman said earlier, you know, this smell does travel. 75 feet, 100 feet, 1,000 feet isn't going to do anything. So, you know, these numbers are arbitrary, they're, we're just picking them out of thin air. I think if you're ag zone and you're surrounded by other ag land, having a 75-foot setback is kind of silly. There's nothing there that you're backed up against. So, yeah, other than that, you know, I think we made some really good progress today and I really appreciate us being able to move forward here and try to put something together that makes sense and works for the majority of people. So I'm really grateful for that and thank you guys.
Mr. Porter?
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank staff and the board for their hard work on this issue. Chair, if I may, could we please scroll down to a certain number on this so I could look at the exact language? Number 15, if that pleases the board. So, I would like to suggest, you know, I think that, you know, we're thinking the same thing, I'm just concerned with how the language is there. I would suggest instead of saying 20 acres per premises, max five, one acre of canopy per 20 acres. So basically, you know, it would allow for smaller license types to aggregate, because, you know, there were a lot of people with 5,000 and 10,000 square feet that were displaced. I see it as no further impact to the property because you're not allowing more than one acre. It would just be, you know, a higher number of license types, but no additional canopy. So just a suggestion on that. The more important one that I see, and I'll act a little dramatic here and say it's mutually assured destruction, number three. If we can't get some kind of conditional local approval, saying that, you know, we check all the boxes, we can now proceed with applying for our state license? I'm not saying to cultivate, I'm not saying to turn anything on, I'm just saying begin the annual licensure process. You know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm assuming Planning Department's going to have, you know, somewhat of a heavy lift on this. I mean, I know that many of these sites have already been approved, so it'll, I'm assuming to be a shorter process on those facilities. But if we're looking at several months of waiting to get Planning's approval, then we have to start the state annual license process. we have to start the state annual license process. 2020 is not going to happen, and I can tell you, speaking as a business owner and a farmer, no 2018 crop, no 2019 crop, and no 2020 crop. You're never going to get a penny of Measure C taxes out of me ever again. And I'm not saying that as a threat. It's just the simple fact that we cannot stand three years down. So all I'm asking for, and I'd ask county councils to look into the city of La Habra and West Sacramento. I've spoke to an attorney today that has started licensure process with these municipalities where they've done exactly this. I don't think this is a stretch. We're not asking to turn on early. We're not asking to conduct business. All we're asking is to concurrently start our state license process, and at the end of it, if we get turned down by the state and we get turned down by you guys, we're out the money. I mean, it doesn't hurt you guys, and no one starts sooner than they would without full approval from local and state permitting authorities. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Lance Ranky from Angels Camp. Seems sad that we're back here reviewing regulation again. I'm definitely in support of the ban, which I think has been effective, and it has allowed the county to get back on its feet and gotten rid of a lot of bad animosities. I have so many more concerns than I can ever address in three minutes of time. So I'll try and just go over a few that are concerns that I have, that I don't see that the board has done a lot of serious research into the laws of the state of California regarding cannabis. Supervisor Mills brought up one of the items that I had as a concern, which was, over the past three years of growing under the urgency ordinance, we haven't had any accounting. We have no idea what kind of revenue has been brought in to the county and the expenses that we put out in support of the UO. That is really disconcerting to me, that we have no idea how much money we spent. And that includes the lawsuits, support of those lawsuits, and all the legal actions that have been taken by the county. The other item that has really bothered me has been the acceptance of large cash payments to the county, which to me seems that the county is involved in money laundering. You can't go into a bank or things and go do and just put down cash. Anything I do with the county, I don't send in cash when I pay my $10,000 in property tax bill. I write a check. Everything is tracked. They know where that money comes from. When you receive cash like that, you're putting a liability on the county. Other concern that I have is that California Cannabis and other reliable reporting has estimated that California overproduces commercial cannabis by about 60 to 75%. And also, that's the same in Oregon and the same in Colorado. In addition, most of the cannabis grown in California has not passed the stringent testing program set up by CalCannabis. So therefore, what's happened is most of the California...
Thank you very much, Mr. Ranky.
That's three minutes.
Go ahead. Ms. Ranky.
Vicki Ranky, Angels Camp. And just one of the things, I took notes from the meeting prior, and one of the things in the note that I didn't hear today was that the previous qualified growers who are in full compliance with the ban can apply with a permit. And that was very clearly stated, but I didn't hear that today, so I'd like that clarified, if that's the case, because all these growers are now, if they haven't cleaned up their properties, they're in violation of the ban. And of course, I'm here to say that I also represent Cracom, Calaveras residents against commercial marijuana, and we are against, we are in support of the ban. And the ban is here. People today are talking like we have no ban, and that they're all getting ready to go to regulation, which has not been approved yet. So I'm here to say that we need to continue the ban, because, you know, what makes us think that it's going to be any different this time when you start trying to regulate again and letting people know that we're open to regulation? We'll be flooded again with probably a lot of illegals and people trying to be legal. The Sheriff Department continues to eradicate illegal grows, even though we have a ban, but at least they can determine what is an illegal grow, because right now we have a ban. With regulation, you know, I'm sure we'll get more illegals coming back in, hiding between the people who want to be permitted. It's just the nature of the game, and we don't want it here. I will remind you again about Measure D, which I know Marita knows very well, because she was one of the signers on that proposal, and that it failed in our county. The people said no to regulation. I know I've gone up here and said this a million times. The marijuana industry turns a county into a place that is not safe for people and kids. And we're talking about 190 permits that were given out, and then you keep saying, "Well, we should start little." So what happens when some of the growers are allowed to grow and some are said, "Well, sorry, but you're not going to get to grow"? What do you think's going to happen? What do you think lawsuits are going to come flooding into this county again, costing our taxpayers the money to pay for all these? Again, very upsetting, because from the day one, we've all said no to this industry. We haven't gone to vote on it, except on Measure D, and nobody will, we were stopped twice on trying to put a ban, and those were stopped by the marijuana grow organizations, because they knew it would pass here in Calaveras and we would be done. We would have had a ban. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carol Couchman. I'm District Two. I'm also a partner in Peace of Mind Health and Wellness. Attorney General William Barr in January 2019 committed to not use the limited resources of the Department of Justice to prosecute state-regulated and compliant cannabis businesses. His response came in from questions from Senator Cory Booker from New Jersey and Kamala Harris from California. With 47 states having laws on the books that defy the Schedule I status of cannabis, it makes no sense to continue the joke of prohibition at the federal level, and I believe that's going to change in the near future. The ban was not a success. The ban has devastating consequences to this county. Most businesses I have spoken to have seen a 40% drop in business and are just trying to hang on and not go out of business. That's what a ban has done to us. The number of vacant buildings in this county is unbelievable, and the ban crowd doesn't care. They are wrong on so many levels. They're very vocal, but they are in the minority. Most residents in this county support a cannabis industry, but the scared tactics and bullying that have been used for the past three years have made everyone sick and tired of the whole thing. When they're talking about odors, I had a squab farm. I had odors. I lived by dairies. There were odors. I have cows on my property now, and they poop and they stink. Odors are a fact of life when you are in the agricultural industry. Get over the odors. Good gracious. State regulators have vowed to allow delivery of cannabis even in banned counties and cities. You're going to have delivery services coming in from other counties to deliver cannabis products, and this county will get nothing. No tax money. I'm encouraged that you're looking at setting up regulation today. Many of us are just hanging on by a thread, and we need to get back to work. We want to be good neighbors, and we place our garden in a location that is private and not bothering anyone. We have spent thousands of dollars to comply with the urgency ordinance regulations. There are lots of ways to get this industry launched again, but if it becomes too expensive, many of us won't be able to make it. And like Mr. Boulter said, we can't run a business and not be able to do business for two to three years and have a business at all. We have to get back to work. It's also imperative that we have all levels of the industry in this county. All my business needs is an infusion and packaging license. I just take cannabis oil, infuse it into an herbal base, and make topical products out of it. I don't need a manufacturing. I just need infusion in cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Good afternoon. So far, there's been a really positive study session. Glad to be here. Especially Supervisor Callaway, I appreciate your position and conviction on personal cultivation, and I hope you can bring two more supervisors along before it's over. In the meantime, thanks for biting the bullet and supporting the lesser of two evils, so we don't all get deprived of personal in the countywide, since that was the other option. And since the board left it open for future discussion, I just kind of want to quickly mention setbacks. A lot of people, myself included, have already had to move their farm once to meet a change in setbacks, from 30 to 75 feet, costing me well over $10,000, including ripping out and replacing newly-installed fencing, adding 200 yards of trenching and plumbing, installing a new irrigation system. And if you talk about changing setbacks, consider the environmental implications, how many trees we'd have to chop down, and all the more grading that that would incur, including just flat-growing area and roads and more, to meet those requirements. All the crazy engineering and grading permits, because the board claims we are ag and aren't covered by the ag grading exemption. And how much of our money this would waste? Our problem, I guess. Please think really hard before you consider changing setbacks in the future. There's a lot to that. And I understand the reason the sheriff wants discretion to disqualify applicants on a case-by-case basis. I talked to him about it a minute ago, and this is not a criticism of his fairness. It's acknowledgement that he's human, and I have trouble with the idea that anybody's fate, let alone a whole bunch of people, be left to the discretion of any one man without having the standards those decisions are based on, articulated. I know it's challenging, but it's probably, I think it's doable. This is the essential difference between a ministerial and a discretionary permit process. You can't have discretion and call it ministerial. I want to acknowledge a misconception on my part when I wrote an email to board members last night. I was in error about the county's role in background checks for employees, inhibiting our ability to move quickly, to mobilize labor. That's a state issue. I was mistaken. My bad. And having said all that, with a couple of minor caveats, which other people have already brought to your attention, I just want to congratulate you overall on a job well done, and say this was the least crazy cannabis regulation board deliberation I've ever witnessed, and I've witnessed them all. Thanks.
So, how many other speakers do we have? Kevin? Patricia? And one more, three. Is that it? Four, five? All right, get up there.
Basically, I just want to say thanks to, for a return towards sanity and watching some working together up there that I haven't seen before, and I've been at most of these too. I don't grow. I don't even use, but the neighborhood I live in is basically 40-acre RR parcels. And I see from the little map that only two of my neighbors were actually registered and doing it, all according to the rules. But the others were good neighbors too, and they've quit. And I don't know what's going to happen on these parcels. I don't know who my new neighbors would be, and I don't know, it's not a pretty enough area for anybody in their right mind to buy it for retirement or for, like, recreation. And so I think the land right now, what it's good for is growing, and I'm concerned that the property value will go down, because it doesn't look like it's going to be permitted there. But in spite of that, in spite of the fact that I might not be able to sell that to somebody, and it might not be a pretty place for me to rebuild, I still am grateful that you did what you did today. Thanks.
Someone's got to step up.
Hello, Board. Trevor Witke, Calaveras Cannabis Alliance, and I want to thank all of you. I want to thank staff and everyone who's been involved in this process. This has been three years of our lives. My son is four years old, and the last time I wasn't dealing with cannabis issues, he was two months old. So the entire life of my son has been consumed by these discussions and these meetings, and I think Tom is right. This has been the most civil, most productive discussion we've seen. I want to thank both Supervisor Mills and Supervisor Tofanelli. I think the two of you have shown an ability and a willingness to compromise and to consider the issues in a way that, to be honest, surprised me. We've very rarely, if ever, seen eye to eye, and I think the two of you have, in the five-O votes, taken the time and the energy to consider the issues in a reasonable fashion and have made very reasonable decisions, and I appreciate that. Supervisor Garamendi, Supervisor Marita Callaway, Supervisor Stopper, thank you all for hearing us, for listening to the community. We've spoken loud and clear on these issues. We've gone over it. We've rehashed it. We've had dozens upon dozens of meetings, and I feel now more than ever, we're actually working in a way that's collaborative and constructive and providing an opportunity for us to move forward. We got five-O votes on a number of the questions that came before us. That is huge. That shows that there is unanimous consensus on certain areas for moving forward. And I think Supervisor Garamendi made a great point. Markets improve efficiency. The more that the market is able to operate and the more that we're able to have good businesses operating under their own self-interested principles of free-market capitalism, they're going to do things like put in fences with locks and gates and incur those costs simply to protect their own interest. They're going to put security cameras in simply to protect their interest. They're going to go over and above the standards that you're creating, because it's going to be beneficial for their own businesses. And I think that that's something that's a bright spot for all of us. We are going to be able to move forward with best practices and best standards coming from the state and replicated here at the county level. Sandy Maitrop made some great points. We learned a lot under the urgency ordinance. Clearly, staff has taken monumental task. That was the urgency ordinance. Processed all the information and the data and fenced it down to 30 questions? Like, we have really done a lot, and I want to commend every one of us. I think that Calaveras County is farther along and farther ahead than anybody else in the state, and it's because of the work of staff. It's because of the work of this community. Thank you.
Very much. New York, Patricia? Who's coming up?
Water prices are being subsidized by water rate payers, because CCWD sells it back cheap. And I see people going up my road with a lot of water every day in the back of their trucks. I don't know what they do with it, but I also see trucks going up my road that have barrels that are laying down as they go up, and they're food grade, and when they go back down the road, they're upright. I don't know what's in those barrels. One time, I smelled something like butane or propane or something, and I reported it. But anyway, and then there's the shooting. There's shooting on one side, there's shooting on the other side, there's shooting all around. And why? I don't know. But to me, it's kind of like they're warning you, "Don't go close." On this plan that you guys have, the principals are not required to live on the site, therefore passing on responsibilities to the person who happens to be there when something goes down, like calling for help and having the person called come and murder three people. If you don't want to call it that, they are dead just the same. Why? Because... Because pot has a higher monetary value than some grapes. It's not the same thing. The utopia of regulation enforcement is ignoring human nature. There are not enough people in this county to enforce the regulations, just like there are an estimated twelve hundred grows out there as we speak. I heard no mention of charcoal filters to make sure that that smell doesn't escape those buildings. And I believe that this is corrupting people, especially people that aren't able to pay their taxes. The general plan has a map. The proposed map is on the wall in the foyer. There is no such map out there showing the present-day map to compare with the zoning. When going to the planning office, they said I could go to the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Neil? How many other speakers do we have? I've got Kevin standing. Jane, are you up? Going once, going twice, okay. Wrap it up.
Good evening. I think you've done some very good work here, and I don't want to criticize, but I think there are a couple of things I just want to point out that might be helpful. I think if we had used the very expensive GIS system that we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on to project on the screen, to see what the impacts of what choices you were making, would have been very helpful. But that my recommendation wasn't listened to on that one. So, we move forward. Sixty-eight percent of total farms are in D2, I know you know that, Jack. Twenty-nine farms in D2 are between five acres and twenty acres. And between ten and twenty acres, there are only seven U and two R. There are no farms in Copperopolis, so we don't really have to worry about the water table over there. There is one eighteen-point-eight acre farm in Wallace, two farms in Angels Camp that are nineteen-point-eight-three and nineteen-point-nine-nine acres. I think that, well, we know that the rezoning is going to follow the general plan update, and this can resolve much of the haphazard zoning that exists now. To force us to spend an additional three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars to rezone will only overburden staff and prevent them from doing the rezoning that they're supposed to be focused on for the general plan update. Ministerial permits seem to be the most efficient means to administer the program. I think CUP is more than necessary at this point. And most critically, there needs to be the dual track. To get this done, while you are finalizing this, to allow us to get state approval, not to, as everyone has stated, not to start, but to get everything done so it's done before the end of the year. Because come the end of the year, as far as my understanding is, we lose our provisional license. And then we go to the back of the line for six thousand applications that are ahead of us, and they're only processing forty a week. I mean, that's years. And I think that's the majority of it. Oh, I just learned this past week that Calaveras County sprayed three-hundred-and-forty-seven gallons of glyphosate over two-hundred-and-thirty-one acres along five-hundred miles of roadway. And the total acreage of commercial cultivation is only fifty-eight acres. It's just an interesting comparison to who's really poisoning our county. Thank you.
Kevin?
What a meeting. You guys are great. I'm serious. There was a lot of time and effort, and you took time out of your life and day to do this. Democracy in action. I'm having a great time. Okay, I'm going to get to some of the issues. Generators off-grid issue. I'm off-grid, so I guess that's my problem. I don't think anything's going to change. I like the state laws, the state rules, but anyway. The background checks, oh, leave setbacks alone. My parcel's thirteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet, feet, I'm sorry, thirteen-hundred-and-fifty feet square. If you, let me give you some alternatives. Don't take the setbacks and apply them to all the properties. If you want to setback different for the smaller ones, tier the setbacks. Have seventy-five for the small, or one-hundred-and-fifty for smaller ones if you think that there's more houses close. Out in my properties, there's no house close, period. And you might also, then the second thing, if you don't want to tier them, and you do want to leave them if you want to change them, you could also take a setback if it has a, it was too close in proximity to a neighbor's property, house, then you could also add that in to be one of the cases. So that's some ideas I think you should consider because setbacks are a problem. Background checks, oh my God. I don't like to give anybody control over making decisions, and I was one of the registrants who got approved against a negative response from the sheriff. Now, I don't have time to go into that unless you want to stop the clock, and I'll tell you the story. But I was overridden by Mr. Moore and approved. It was a ridiculous thing that came out of something, so I don't like the background checks. Also, seasonal employees. If you want to background check everybody, make sure that the sheriff is on our schedule so we don't have to go get twenty seasonal employees, have a line, and we're thirty minutes late for them to close. So make the rules that he has to comply with concise, accessible, and reasonable for us in business. Remediation, five-thousand-dollar bond. If you want a bond, make it fifty thousand. Make it have some teeth. Five thousand's ridiculous. Remediation, let the owner do it and let him go as long as he's doing it in good faith. Appeals process. I like the, the language from the, oh, I'm sorry, you could steal the language for the appeals process so that if there were denial, we could appeal to the board. I would love that process, and you could probably steal the language from the CUP guidelines in some of the ordinances. Now, thank you for chasing out the bad guys with the ban. Thank you for that, because now what's left are the good guys. Remember that when you pass the laws. Thank you. Really, thank you, from my heart.
Jane, you'll be our last speaker. Sorry.
Good afternoon. What a productive day. You know, when there's a compromise, neither side's entirely happy, and I see a lot of unhappy people on both sides. Those that know me know this affects me deeply. I'm not going to be able to farm on my property, but I'm still here for the fight, because this is what's right. That being said, I encourage you guys to look at co-location and clustering. You're going to have over a hundred farms that can no longer apply, that are no longer viable in this county. They're going to need to relocate, or they're going to need to rezone. This is even more cumbersome work upon our staff. So let's get these people moving. Let's get them either purchasing new property, finding a way to co-locate, so that we can get the tax revenue running into this county's coffers. So that's just kind of a personal point for me, but I think we need to be aware that this is going to take time. And if we don't have the dual-track system of having permission to apply to the state, we are looking at probably eighteen months to two years for any relocating farm to start business again. I know some of you don't care about those that have to relocate, but if we want a sustainable industry in this county, we need to care about those that chose to apply and stand up and go through this regulatory process from the beginning. Sorry. Technology. Setbacks. I'd like to encourage you to think about setbacks when the property is co-owned by the same owner. These setbacks, I think, are sometimes arbitrary, and we shouldn't be having to setback from our own property lines. In some cases, that puts the cultivation site in a worse location, both environmentally and from public view, when we're subject to arbitrary setbacks, especially when it's from our own. And finally, I think we need to advocate for a cannabis program manager to make sure timelines by both the applicant and the county are adhered to. We experienced a lot of bottlenecks, and dare I say selective enforcement and selective application processing this last time, and that needs to be avoided, and I think that can be done with somebody managing the program. Not that our planning department hasn't done an excellent job with the workload that they have and the staff that they have, but let's make this efficient this time. Let's get this right this time so that it's here for the long haul and we don't have to go through this again. Thanks for everything.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? We're good. Seeing none, we will close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. This is a study session, so there's no action item. Is there further discussion on behalf of the board or things that you, that you might want to add into the mix as we go forward? And Peter, as we wrap this up, I'd like you to explain clearly what our process is from this point. Maybe that's a good spot to start.
Okay, yes, first of all, is there any of these issues that the board wants to revisit based on public comment?
Supervisor Calloway?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to look at the distribution one again, and we've heard different stories, so I'd look to see what is it that is allowed or isn't allowed. Being that I'm looking, I looked at sole distribution, the owner could distribute their own product, and I heard different things today. From several people, we've heard about being able to submit to the state as well, as while they're doing the county process. I mean, neither we're going to hold people up, and because it is critical, that's one of the reasons that we're sort of pushing for it now, is so those people who had their temporary license and were banned can now get, go back and get their provisional license, and if they have to wait to apply for that while waiting for our process to start, then we could reach the end of the year. And I think we should consider that. The woman that spoke about water tables, you know, I thought that was a valid concern, but I understood that the state water control board had, they had to get permits from them anyway. Is that, is something changed on that that would deal with that?
So the, the water board is, talks about surface water runoff and pollution issues, not necessarily groundwater supply and availability.
Okay, so when we do a subdivision, we, people have to prove water and the water table, and if, the famous one in Gary's area where there was going to be a huge take of the groundwater, and that was one of the reasons for, one of the many reasons of turning down the project, is that an issue that we should be dealing with in this case? You know, I mean, we allow groundwater use for golf courses, for other ag products. Is there something different we should be doing here that we are or are not doing elsewhere?
Well, these are policy calls by the board. If that's something that you want us to include in ordinance, to, then we would need to...
No, I guess my, my question is, is we already have like a system in place. Is there any need for us to do something special?
There, there isn't a system in place. You know, if you have, if you're building a house and you are serving the house by a well, you have to demonstrate that you have potable water. But we do not have a minimum standard as far as the amount of water. You could do storage, so when we do a subdivision, for example, or some other larger discretionary permit approval, we do look at the likely capability of groundwater to serve the project if that's what's proposed. It's very difficult to actually prove that there is, there will be sufficient groundwater over time to serve the project. We can do some, you know, in some areas, we have actual groundwater table that you can do some testing and look at, drawdown. But for the most part, in the county, we have a fractured rock system that testing won't necessarily provide any data as to the long-term effect of a well on someone else's well versus how long that groundwater source may produce at the level that a pump test would, would create at that time.
And one more item I have, if I heard correctly from public comment, we would, I think we should consider allowing starter plants if they've gone through the process, but I heard a commitment from those people that spoke that they, you know, there's no turning on the lights or planting them in the ground, but the possibility of at least getting started for what will take a few months to go through the county and maybe longer for the state, I'm not sure. So those are my three areas of things I'd like us to consider.
Okay, we've got ten minutes left on the DVD, and then we're going to have to break and reconvene. Are there other comments from the board?
So let's be real quick. Otherwise, we're going to, if we don't get it done in ten, we're not going to be done until thirty.
And speaking to the water table issue, I was in a conference with DWR up in Placerville here within the last thirty days, speaking to the issue of ag efficiency, and that the state is not going to relent on that one. So where there is no proven water, or there is a questionable water source, that is going to play into some decisions that are going to be made here in the near future. Secondly, I think that the bonding, as we look at it, I don't know if, if you have the ability to, to get insurance on your car, bonding for something, oftentimes a million-dollar bond is the starting point, it's not the endpoint. And so, maybe a five-thousand-dollar bond for a potential future cleanup is way too low in this discussion. So those are the two things I think that really kind of hinge. Also, very quickly about money laundering. If the, if the county wants to receive money, maybe they set it up in advance to do it so that there's no cash received, so that we can actually go through it and follow state, or follow federal regulations in the receipt of money, so we don't have to deal with why I voted no on returning that money last time. Thank you.
Supervisor Stopp?
Just number three, I brought up the, when applying to the state for a permit, applicant shall be provided, by the county, a conditional local authorization letter to facilitate the state licensure process. One of the comments had brought up La Habra in West Sacramento is using that process. I had been able to also find that through a simple Google search. So if you could look into that as we proceed into the future, I would like that to be considered.
Thank you. Do you know, for the lights on, Peter, why don't you tell us what our next steps are and how this is going to work out?
So then it comes back to staff. I'll be working with county council to craft a draft ordinance. We will revisit the environmental document, determine whether or not we can use that EIR or if there's substantial changes that need to go back to some other type of environmental review. Once we've completed that process, we then set it for hearing before the planning commission. They would make a recommendation to, to the board and back here for adoption hearing. Sounds like very simple process, but it's not going to happen overnight.
We know, we know better than... Thank you. What's your timeline?
I'm really reluctant to...
It's like I got three minutes left till I tape runs out.
I'm, I'm reluctant to say, oh, we'll get it done in X number of weeks or months because I really don't know. We, we need to sit down and figure out, you know, the writing of the ordinance along with everything else on our plate right now. And I can say it will be at least three to four months, just in the bare minimum necessary for noticing requirements, and then whatever time is necessary for the actual work to be done to craft this ordinance.
Can I ask that, maybe in the next couple of weeks, as you dig through this, I know we've got a lot of general plan on the plate, if you could perhaps, you know, either announce another or even agenda item, get up and let us know sort of how you see this timeline coming together.
We can give you an update on where we're at.
Update on where we're at, just so we keep everybody knowing how our path is.
Okay. I, I wanted to, a couple of the issues that were brought up, I don't have a problem with concurrent processing. concurrent processing. I don't know that the state would allow unless we actually give them an authorization. But if that's something that the majority of the board wants to allow, there's really nothing that would prohibit us from letting someone applying to the state at the same time. I just don't know if the state would allow it, if they would accept an application that we're just saying, there's an application in process here. I'd have to do some more research on that.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I would be in favor, that's fine.
Supervisor Stopper? All right, Supervisor Mills? Supervisor Callaway? I'm a yes too. So four and...
Four and a ring.
I'm going to bet Supervisor Stopper, I will not speak for Supervisor Stopper. Supervisor Stopper, are you okay with concurrent registration?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. 5-0, that's our second one. So that should give you some direction.
I agree. I apologize to you all.
I want to, before we run out of time, I want to do two things. I want to thank the citizens of this county for showing up and being very respectful participants in this. We really reflected well on our community. Thank you very much. And I think I'd say that on behalf of the board. I also want to thank...
I applaud you all.
I also want to thank our staff. You guys did a great job. This is a very logical rollout, and the prep was much appreciated. Julie, Peter, Ethan, and all your, all your team, thank you very much for doing this. And finally, I'd like to thank my fellow board members. I think we did some good work today. So with that, we stand adjourned.